August 24th, 2009, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let it unify the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Dean Goke.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Lena Rotola.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
And Terry Wambel.
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 10th, 2009?
移到 22:00
We have a motion for approval, second by council member Sang. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So, right now, we're on a public comment, so please step to the podium and spell your last name for the record and your city or your address.
My name is Dempsey Andrews, last name A-N-D-R-E-W-S. Address is 2836 Chase Street. And I'm here tonight to represent some of the Chase residents south of 29 to discuss an issue that's pretty relevant this year, and that is the flooding. We brought this before the city council a number of times. We're still suffering from it, especially this year. My comment is, the citizens of Chase Street aren't required to provide their own police protection. They're not required to provide their own fire protection. Just kind of wondering why we are kind of forced to provide our own flood mitigation work. So, I'm going to turn it over to some people behind me, or one person behind me that has actually, two people that have suffered even more than I have this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record and your address.
I'm Jeff McCrory. It's M-C-C-R-O-R-Y at 2830 Chase Street. I just kind of wanted to follow up with my neighbor's comments. Actually, we, you know, of course, we got this flood mitigation and curbs, gutters, sidewalks put on the ballot last November. And of course, it was not passed, unfortunately, but, you know, after meeting with the city engineers last year, you know, we were, of course, told, you know, these are kind of five-year occurrences, and here we are seeing these things five and six times within the past two summers. And, you know, it's to the point where actually, my front porch, the whole concrete slab is now cracked. It's sinking. I can't even actually open my front door now. So, it continues to get worse, and, you know, at this point, hopefully, we can have it brought back up again, and that's just kind of our reason for stepping up to the mic tonight. So.
Thank you. Before anybody else continues, could you please silence or turn off any cell phones that may be in the audience? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Rob Davis, D-A-V-I-S. My wife and I reside at 2840 Chase Street in Wheat Ridge, and we've lived in the neighborhood for three years now. And we encounter garage flooding three to five times a year as a result of up-the-hill flooding down 29th Street. It comes right across 29th and flows right down the street, and there's nothing to mitigate the water from coming across our yard into our garage. And I just wanted to make the council and the citizenry aware of this issue, that this still is impacting our lives, and we'd appreciate reconsideration on this subject from council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Parati. I reside at 7174 West 38th Avenue. I also have other addresses out of town. I want to speak in behalf of Laura Clark also, so I need additional time. I'm going to speak about parking, Wheat Ridge 2020, and weed control.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm up, I guess.
You're up.
Come on.
Okay. There you go. You pull the mic down to your...
Excuse me. You shouldn't remember my name. Maybe some of you took time from your busy schedule to read my documented facts in a letter dated July 7th and July 10th. Some of you didn't read it, I understand, because you were too busy with other things. I hand-delivered to the city clerk these letters to put in your box, and I also hand-delivered additional copies to council people that represented me in my districts one and two. I have a copy, if anybody's interested in reading it at this time, for you. I've owned properties in this community since 1969. I've paid all my taxes and conducted business. In the past five years, I have paid approximately $28,000 in taxes and have not received the benefit, any benefit, of renting because of the stringent rules enforced by the fire department and the building code due to the unreasonable interpretations of building and fire codes by the decision-making people. My dealings with the fire board in regard to Mr. Sabat may have brought about his termination. In the past few weeks, I met with Wheat Ridge 2020 in regard to purchasing a parking lot to the east side of my building because all of my parking was taken away from me when they redone the front of the 38th revitalization, which I was paid a nominal sum for. That's not the issue. I wish that the city council would make a decision, and hopefully, I know you can't move fast, but maybe tonight you can come to some kind of an agreement, as to whether you will open that parking lot up to the general public and the business people there. Wheat Ridge 2020, as far as I know, are supposed to turn that parking lot back over to the city of Wheat Ridge as of July, I believe July 10th of this year. I offered them money to buy it. They didn't give me an answer. I met with them twice. In my opinion, Wheat Ridge 2020 is very ineffectual to this community, and I think it's done more harm than good as far as cohesion between the business owners and the city of Wheat Ridge Building Department, Fire Department, and other personnel and planning department. I'm here tonight to request that you open that parking lot up to the general public so that I might have some use for it also. In this past week, I have turned down two people, and I can give you their names and phone numbers, because there's no parking on the building. The building has been vacant for approximately four years. Let's see. We could have a tighter-knit community like we had back in the '70s if the Wheat Ridge Building Department and city management would lighten up and review the circumstances for personnel that want, for people that want permits, and cut them some slack without breaking the rules. I think that this city should get rid of the attitude of you against us, and that's the attitude that prevails right now when you talk to everybody in the area. And I've only been back here for about two weeks now, and I'd like to see this happen, because there's no cohesion in the community anymore. On to another subject, weed control. I was in the process of donating my property on Harland Street, 4747 Harland, northwest corner of City of Wheat Ridge. And I get a letter, and the letter came to me about my weeds. Well, the letter that I got, I got it on a date that it was due for me to comply. I called up, and my representative, Wanda Sang, got me a day or two more to comply. I complied with it. Wasn't to the satisfaction of the city of Wheat Ridge. I had to go back and do something else, and in the interim, they cited me. Well, I took the action that I needed to correct it. Part of this citation was invalid, and even the officer, I guess her name was Bon Jana Vadi, or some Italian name, and she even admitted that she was wrong, but the city of Wheat Ridge didn't back off. Well, I was shocked when I went to pay my taxes, because they fined me an extra $389 for weeds. Well, they added that to my property taxes. You know, that's like sticking a knife in my back and twisting it. Well, you know how I feel about donating property to the city of Wheat Ridge right now. It won't happen. I don't have any community spirit right now because of that. But because I have spoken out, there's a lot of people, there are a couple of people on this council board that I know don't like me, but that's their problem, not mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, this is not a pep rally, so please give everybody the same respect. Cheryl?
Cheryl Brungart. I'm here for Enterprise Wheat Ridge. Our address is PO Box 1231, Wheat Ridge, 80034. We had a meeting where we had Congressman Ed Perlmutter come a couple weeks ago, and we just wanted to express our thanks to the police department, especially Chief Dan Brennan, Commander Joe Casa, Lieutenant Mark Cooney, Lieutenant Wade Hammond, Sergeant Kevin Armstrong, and also the Wheat Ridge Recreation staff, especially Rich Swanson, because we didn't want this to turn into something that happened like in Brighton, so that we had publicity for other reasons. But we really appreciate the Wheat Ridge staff stepping up and help us welcome, in a polite way, our congressman. So, that's one reason I'm here. The second reason is to announce that Wheat Ridge, Enterprise Wheat Ridge is partnering with the city of Wheat Ridge for the 2009 candidate forum. That will be held at our regular meeting on Tuesday, September 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. You do need to RSVP if you'd like to come. It's $12 a person, and you can register at ewheatridge.com, and we need those registrations by September 3rd. So, we really welcome everyone to come hear the candidates, and also to hear about the issues that will be on the ballot, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. 6:00 a.m. for you, John.
John McMillan, M-C-M-I-L-L-I-N, 9801 West 38th Avenue. I think the last gentleman's comments about his weed problems will help introduce what I'm going to speak about first. And it's not a matter that came directly before council, so it's for your information and for all the people out here, and the people at home who deserve to know why the corner of West 38th and Kipling looks so different now. For the past two weeks, residents near this corner have been hearing constant noise of chainsaws and wood chippers. But unlike everywhere else in Wheat Ridge, this wasn't the fault of June's hailstorm. Guests at that great American diner, the Apple Ridge Cafe, looked out their windows and watched the backhoes at work as they knocked down this half-wild acre of suburban forest in just a day or so. Folks who drive by there now see an acre of raw dirt. It looks like a clear-cut logging operation. It's been stripped of every living thing, down to the dirt. Most folks would guess the land's about to be subdivided and built up, but sadly, there's no buyer and no developer involved. Before, people might have mistaken the lot for a park. Horses grazed there for years, families of foxes and skunks, and who knows what other critters called it home. Today, it's an empty eyesore. And why? Over code violation. The way I hear it, it all started last winter when one tree fell over a fence line. The officer doing code enforcement ordered the owner to cut down every tree, claiming they all were dead, in winter. But by June, we could all see that most of them were green and healthy. The spring rains had postponed any immediate fire danger. Now, this woodlot was overgrown. It hadn't been thinned or picked up in decades, but the owner, a middle-aged female, worked on it many long days by herself, or with her daughter, on hot, long days, sometimes with a few hired hands, trying to thin the underbrush and the saplings with hand tools. That wasn't enough to please the city code cop or the city judge. After three $500 tickets and much more money spent in cleanup costs, she finally called in a crew to clear the lot. It's hard to blame her after so much grief, but look at what we're left with. Is there a plan to re-vegetate the site? It's almost too late to do that before the spring winds turn this into a new source of code complaints for blowing dust. Then come the noxious weeds in the summer. This land could remain empty for years, standing like a scar beside the site of the city's newest, proudest park. Time was the issue here. There was no reason to act in haste. This little patch of overgrown forest had taken at least half a century to become a minor problem at most. And I believe this property owner, at minimum, deserved more time to thinner property, and we all deserve a more conciliatory, problem-solving style of code enforcement. I don't believe our city codes have any special provisions for an urban forest or a woodlot. If I'm elected to city council in District 4, I'll work to create that code category. It will encourage people to keep some trees on their property, but manage them well and avoid these kinds of obvious problems. Then, I hope the city can begin to work cooperatively with property owners to manage forested areas in a wiser and more attractive way. That's what you and I would expect from a city that boasts of being named a Tree City USA for 30 years running. But this city made no effort to save any of these trees, to my knowledge, and every effort to destroy them. I would also point out the Neighborhood Reinvestment Study, which is quoted like a bible by many of you on the council. They recognize the value of extensive and mature tree canopies, and also the rural flavor of some of our neighborhoods. That makes our town more attractive, inviting to those strong families. Remember? I'll leave you with three words: patience, reasonableness, common sense. If the city administration had exercised more of these virtues, the corner of 38th and Johnson Street wouldn't be the mess it is today. Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everybody to please turn off their cell phones. Also, this is a business meeting, and you have a right to say what you need to say, but I wanted to make sure that there's no clapping or booing or cheering. Let's keep it professional, and everybody has a right to say what they need to say in a professional manner. Mr. Goke?
Yes, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a problem with the content of your information you provided for the community, but this is not a forum to run for office. I just think that's an abuse of coming in and using that forum to promote your candidacy, and any other candidate come up would do that. I would chastise them just like I'm chastising them.
I respect that. I'm not the first candidate who said, mentioned they were running in the past.
You said you were going to use that as a candidate, as part of your forum, to run for office.
Okay, that's enough. We're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, but it's only 7:20. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have six items on consent tonight. Item 1A, Resolution 42, 2009, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado regarding administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct coordinated election to be held November 3rd, 2009. 1B, Resolution 43, 2009, amending 2009 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a reduction in appropriations in the amount of $2,481,264. 1C, motion to approve the July 31st, 2009 invoice for legal services for Murray Dahl Kutschenmeister Rinald LLP in the amount of $21,406.51. 1D, Resolution 35, 2009, amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $6,170.70 for the annual monthly managed services payment for video streaming. 1E, motion to award RFP 0908 citywide custodial services to American Facility Service Group for the annual not-to-exceed amount of $40,344. Item 1F, Resolution 44, 2009, amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the additional contract building inspections related to damage from the July 20th, 2009 storm to Cold Consultants International in the amount of $120,000.
Would anybody like to poll any items? Mr. Goke?
1B.
Oh, F.
The motion's in order for the rest. Mr. Stites?
Then I move to approve A, C, D, E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for approval of items A, C, D, and E, second by council member Sang. Discussion on those. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with council member Wambel voting no.
Thank you. Before we go on, can somebody please close the back door, Patrick or Kevin? There's a lot of background noise coming in. Thank you. Item 1B, Mr. Goke?
Resolution, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 43, 2009, a resolution amending the 2009 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a reduction in approximation in the amount of $2,481,264.
Is there a second? Oh, you want to make a motion, Mr. Goke?
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 23-2009, amending the 2009 fiscal year fund budget to reflect the approval of a reduction in appropriations in the amount of $2,481,264.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want to confirm that you said Resolution 43, Mr. Goke? 43-2009?
Yes.
Do we have a motion for approval, second by council member Sang. Discussion on item 1B? 1B. Mr. Goke?
Yeah, I think this is a good opportunity for staff to let the community know how hard they've worked in reducing the general fund budget this year. It's been a very difficult process, I know. Based with the Budget Oversight Committee and what they had to go through to hear about the coming year, not only counting on this year's budget, not meeting projections. And so I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Young and Mr. Goff to go over that so the public can know.
Thank you, Councilman Goke. I'll go ahead and start off, and then I'll have Patrick Goff, our Director of Finance, weigh in on anything else I may miss. Basically, as you mentioned, Councilman, we have certainly heading into this year, the end of last year, the end of 2008, we've been very cautious with our expenditures as a city. We cut quite a bit out of the last, the end of last year's budget where we could, saved that money to build a role into this year. Beginning of this year, again, actually starting the end of 2008, but in the beginning of this year, all the departments were directed to look at all their expenditures that were in the 2009 budget and not to expend any dollars that were not absolutely necessary. We also cut out of all travel related to training and conferences and those types of activities at the beginning of the year. And really, what this action you're taking tonight does is just formalizes those budget reductions that we identified throughout the year. And then, as we sat down, as things continually get worse, as we went through 2009, with the revenue picture, we continued to identify other areas where we can make some cutbacks to help balance the budget. Right now, we're projecting about a $3.5 million deficit in our revenue projections by the end of the year, again, if things stay on the same track they're on today. Therefore, we've had to identify everywhere we could to cut back our expenditure side of the budget to be more in line with that revenue picture. So that's what this resolution does. It draws out those different items and does kind of break it out by departments a little bit and showing you where a lot of those savings were realized. With that, I'll turn it over to Patrick Goff. Does he have anything further to add?
I don't have anything further to add, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, what did you, what were we mostly looking to make these type of adjustments in the budgets? Were they across the board? Were they more or less centered in law enforcement, public works, parks department? Where do we find this money? It's a lot of money to find.
It was across the board. As Mr. Young mentioned, every department was asked to look at their budgets and cut all discretionary spending, if possible. Every effort was made to maintain a base level of service and programs for our citizens. But again, as Mr. Young mentioned, a lot of the areas that were cut were conference meetings and trainings, any type of travel. We had several positions which we have not filled. So we have salary savings. We have several positions that we are not going to fill until we determine we need to. So there may be some reduction in park plantings of flower beds. The Police Department is going to cut back in some of their problem-oriented policing projects. Besides that, most of it is operating expenses and a large transfer to the general fund. We make a transfer on an annual basis to the Capital Improvement Project Fund for capital projects. The capital budget had a larger fund balance than this year than projected, so we are taking that transfer back and putting that back into the general fund.
Do you have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Mr. Wumble?
Yes, I'm wondering, as of today, going into this year, how much have we spent on conference and meetings? I just, I get these emails all the time saying people are going to be out of town doing conference and meetings, so I'm just wondering how much we've spent.
I don't have that number with me tonight.
Could you give me a ballpark?
I cannot, no.
No? Is it above $10,000,000?
I don't know. I can get that number for you later.
Can we have it for next Monday's meeting?
Sure can.
Great. And then, secondly, I was wondering, has there been any salary decreases in upper management at all?
No.
There is not.
We have frozen all salaries, though. There was a market increase. We do market increases on an annual basis mid-year, effective July 1st. This year's market increases were frozen. We are projecting for the 2010 budget, we are not going to budget for merit increases or market adjustments also. It's about $725,000 worth we're projecting, which we are going to freeze.
Are we, do we still have gasoline allowances for upper management?
Yes, sir, we still do. Another thing just to point out, so you're aware of, on the conference, the meetings, the trainings, there is, there are certain positions in the city that require a certain amount of training and to stay certified in those certain positions. So we have not cut those up yet, and we don't plan on, again, we need to keep our employees certified in those areas. They need to be certified, whether they, law enforcement, or some of the other departments.
Councilmember Berry?
If I understand you correctly, we still have a million dollars' worth of shortfall between now and the end of the year.
Well, again, that's based on our best guess estimate on revenue through the end of the year. But yes, we do have a continued shortfall that we, we're continuing to identify some of the areas where we may be able to realize some savings when we bring those back to a later date as we realize them.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable on waiting till the end of the year and possibly having to take a million dollars out of the reserves. If, you know, things may not look, they're probably not as good next year either. And so I'm uncomfortable spending that much out of the reserve for this year. So, you know, go ahead and implement these. But again, I would like to see some options for ways that we could get some further savings. And I know those are going to be down to some very difficult decisions, and maybe it's probably going to impact services. But I just don't feel comfortable taking that much money out of the reserve.
Again, we'll continue to look, and we'll continue to report back to you on those options.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also know, when I got on council, I think we tried to make a commitment that we would keep a 15% in reserve. Is that correct, Mr. Goff, Mr. Young?
That's correct.
And at this rate, I don't believe we're going to be able to stick with that commitment if we still do not get more revenue in. So we are going to have to look harder at some of the things. I want to commend you for the departments and the department heads coming forward with the information that they did and with making the cuts that they did make. I had one correction under the budget cuts. The elimination of one top of the hour should be elimination of the year in review, and that is a $5,500 cut. It's not a cut to the top of the hour. That's under the budget for the administrative services area. And I wanted to clarify that because I was researching that today, and Mr. Goff helped me figure out that one. And then the other thing I wanted to bring forward, if my fellow counselors and the mayor would be amicable to an amendment to this, all the departments have come forward, and I highly respect the fact that each of them has looked hard and will continue to look hard. There is one budget, which is for the council and the mayor, the council and mayor's legislative budget. And I thought possibly, it is certainly a small amount compared to the amounts that you have had to look at through your departments. But I was wondering if we could look at the legislative training budget for 2009, and also the outside agency budget and what's left in that. And this is basically for our citizens at home to understand that we do have a budget that we utilize for our education purposes on council and also to lobby downtown and also on the federal level, to be able to bring forward things that are important to our job, to help serve our citizens. But at this point in time, I think it would be appropriate to look maybe a little bit at our own budget. I know in the past, some of those budget items have been used for wine parties, donations, and also for the Carnation Festival donations and that type of thing. I have not used them for that purpose. I've used them for training purposes and also lobbying purposes. But I wondered if perhaps the council would like a friendly amendment that we would be able to look tonight at, I don't know whether we would want to call it a freeze, Mr. Dahl, or an amendment that we would just simply not spend the money that is left in our legislative training in that particular council budget, and also for the outside agency budget. Mr. Goff, can you help me with where that dollar figures are pulled from?
Dollar figures for?
For our council, for this council and mayor.
The council's budget is similar to the rest of the departments. You do have a conference and meeting line item that each of you, each council member receives $3,000 a year for training. And then also, there is an outside agency line item, which we use for donations and grants to nonprofits who apply for funding from the city. There's also some, just some money in there just for requests that are made to the city for funds. Small amount of money, but...
And it is a small amount, but I think in the nature of what we're asking and how close we are getting to perhaps making some cuts in some situations with employees at the city, that we would perhaps look at doing some cutting ourselves as far as our budgets are concerned.
Well, actually, Ms. Adams, I think if you want to do that, you're going to have to make an amendment to have further discussion on it. And I think you would need some account numbers and some dollar amounts from city staff to, so you could address that in the amendment.
Okay. Mr. Goff, do you have those figures that Mr. Dahl could write up?
I don't. I can run and get it.
Mr. Wumble?
Since you're running back, if you could get my figures, too, that'd be great.
Come on, guys. This is getting out of hand here. Let's, I mean, you have one figure. You can get the other figure. Ms. Sang?
I don't think this is the time to do this. I think we need to sit down and discuss it, maybe at a study session, and so give the staff time to get things together and not try to do it from the hip, so to speak. We need to have all the information. I think that what, maybe we can find other places that we can cut. But I don't think we should try to do it from the dais tonight.
Mr. Goke?
Well, I historically have had my $3,000 in there for as long as it's been available. And I have to tell you, I haven't spent it. But I still don't want to give up my opportunity to support a nonprofit group or to assist a grant of some needy organization that all of a sudden, there's a shortfall in our budget and we can't afford it. I supported this year a luncheon for the petitioners of this city because there was not enough money that could be afforded for that. So I used my budget this year so those founders, so those petitioners could have a luncheon. Those people hadn't seen each other in years and years, finally got an opportunity. 1969, they were the people that went out, grabbed the signatures, and beat feet up to Jefferson County and beat out Lakewood. I think that was a great expenditure of my funds. Thank you.
So, Ms. Adams, do you have an amendment?
Yes, I will have an amendment. I think probably the best way to do it, we also have an appreciation dinner coming for $6,500 for our commissioners that's coming up. That's an expense that we have. I don't know if we would want to look at that. As far as shooting from the hip, I did investigate some of the figures that are in these particular areas. And I also talked with Michael Snow, who was going to help get some of those figures together for me tonight, and also with Mr. Goff. So my amendment would be, should I proceed with the amendment?
Go ahead.
My amendment would be to empty the legislative training budget of the city council members, to also disband, this is just for 2009. We'll look again at 2010 because I think they're worthwhile, or they wouldn't be in there. But for 2009, the legislative training of all the counselors, the outside agency, and I would like to further move that we talk at a study session for the dollars being spent for the appreciation dinner, $6,500 being spent for the appreciation dinner for the boards and commissions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval of the amendment, seconded by Councilmember Rotola. Mr. Goke?
Yeah, I find it ironic. When we go look for money, we go out and we crap on our people that commit their time to this community free, gratis, on our boards and commissions. These people give of their time in a little appreciation, $6,500 for all the work they put in throughout the year. And we want to go ahead and hack their program out? I think that's a shame. It's a travesty.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Our Councilmember Adams. Sorry.
I did not say that I was going to hack that. And I did not by any means say that I didn't appreciate them. I said we would take it to a study session and see if $6,500 was in order. So I believe there's a point of order there. I did not say those words. Mr. Goke?
Well, I won't be supporting this, obviously.
Okay, we have an amendment by Councilmember Adams that was seconded to amend the council budget and to have some information go to a study session. Please poll the council on the amendment.
Motion fails five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting yes.
Can we have the main motion as stated by Councilmember Goke? Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Adams voting no.
Thank you. Item 1F, Councilmember Berry?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 44, 2009, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for additional contract building inspections related to damage from the July 20th, 2009 storm to Code Consultants International in the amount of $120,000. The damage to structures and property from the July 20th, 2009 storm was significant. Staff estimates that approximately 3,000 roofs will require replacement from storm damage. Each roof replacement requires a building permit, and the city is required to provide a minimum of two and, on average, closer to three, building inspections for each roof permit. Existing building division staff is able to perform the inspections for approximately half of this additional high-volume inspections. The balance of the inspections will need to be done by contract inspectors with Code Consultants International. Based upon $30 per inspection, staff has estimated an additional cost for contract inspections of $120,000. Resolution 44, 2009 would approve a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $120,000. Oh, okay. Let's see. I'd probably, just trying to figure out what to read. Okay. Right. Is it resolution, is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
Excuse me. That second part was just repetitive, so I decided not to read it. I move to approve Resolution 44, 2009, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for contract building inspection services to Co-Consultants International in the amount of $120,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval, seconded by numerous council members. Discussion on the main motion. Councilmember Berry?
I thought this might be an opportunity to talk about what the, what the city's expenses may have been in relationship to the storm in terms of extra overtime and things like that, to just do a little bit of an update on this additional hit besides revenue drops to our budget this year.
Yeah. Councilmember Berry, I can, I can speak to that. Tonight, in front of you is a budget supplemental for contract building inspections for $120,000. So that is definitely directly related to the storm, the aftermath of the storm. We've also brought forward a budget supplemental to you several weeks ago for, I think, another $120,000. And that was for the disposal of the trees and brush and limbs from the storm. All that money has not been spent at this time. Hopefully, all of it doesn't get spent. But we don't know the total cost, what the total cost is going to be. Overtime at this point, I believe we have about $15,000 in overtime. It wasn't a lot. A lot of the work was handled on shift, so we were able to keep overtime costs down. We have numerous damages to city property. Fortunately, we have insurance for that. We've estimated over about $600,000 so far in property damage. We do have a $10,000 deductible, so there will be $10,000 out of the general fund also. Beyond that, I don't know if we have any additional costs unless any of the directors at the table or the city manager has anything, so...
Okay. Just one other...
Okay. Just one other concern or question. You know, I talked to a few contractors in this city, and they said they weren't being able to get any roofing jobs because we had quite a few kind of fly-by-night, out-of-town people coming in and then just knocking on doors and offering to undercut any contractor. In fact, I was talking to a resident when one such person drove up and said, you know, "Have you gotten the estimate yet? We'll undercut anything, any price," and was pretty insistent. And this was an elderly resident. I was a little bit concerned about the high-pressure tactics, but I don't know if, you know, what the building department is doing or able to do to kind of help residents. If we're seeing a lot of complaints in this, if having these additional staff will help with the residents with making sure that they get the right type of roof on their house and they get a good inspection and a good contract.
Sure. We certainly have been making every effort to get the word out on the need for permits for roof replacement and the need to get a licensed contractor to do that work. We are building inspectors as they're out in the field, are certainly identifying new, any signs that they see and calling back to the office to verify that those signs that they see are indeed licensed contractors. They have been doing some weekend work out of concern that there is the potential for roofers, unlicensed roofers, to come in and do work over the course of a weekend and just kind of potentially fly under the radar. So we have been spending some money to support that effort and try and identify those individuals that might be doing that. We actually, in the area hardest hit by the July 20 storm, posted the door, the doors with flyers with information about the need to get a permit to do the roof replacement work and a need to get the licensed contractor, along with contact information for the building division so that they can call in, and certainly people can call in, and we will check and verify whether any individual contractor is or is not licensed.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council? I'd like to make a quick comment. I'm going to pass the gavel here to Councilmember Sang. Generally speaking, we had a mayor's commissioners' breakfast meeting this month at, in, at the Taj Mahal in Jefferson County, and a lot of the mayors and commissioners are there talking about their budgets. Generally speaking, Councilmember Gokey was there, Councilmember Langworthy was there, that generally across the front range, cities' revenues are down eight to 10 percent, and that's probably going to be a consistent number through the end of the year depending on the economy. But when Lakewood was brought up about their reserve, and the reserve is for emergencies, I wanted to remind council that Tabor requires a 3 percent, 3 percent reserve for emergencies, and the city council has been keeping anywhere between 15 to 21 percent in reserves for emergencies. Lakewood's take on this was that they were not going to cut staff and they were not going to cut services because in their mind, the storm of this year plus the economy is an emergency, that they will go into those reserves because that's taxpayer money, and they will go down to their reserve to 8 percent. And I think Mr. Afanti would remember, when we were on council, we kept the reserve at 8 percent, 5 to 8 percent as a reserve for emergencies rather than 15 or 21 percent. So I think council, I'm just asking you to be aware that threats of cutting of services or talking about cutting of services is a possibility, but you also have to remember that the reserve is there for emergencies, and there's two emergencies that this city is dealing with. One was the storm, and two is the economy in general. And you may have to look at other ways to address the 8 to 10 percent just by trying to save and hoard the reserve, because saving and hoarding the reserve doesn't benefit the citizens, and the services are what we need to keep moving along as best we can. So I just wanted to give that heads up, that Lakewood isn't looking at furloughs, they're not looking at cutting services, but they are dipping into the reserve for 2009 and 2010. So I'll take my gavel back. Mr. Gokey?
Yes, I, we might have found our million dollars we needed. I just, the average permit for a roof can go just about anywhere, but I figured about $800 with all of the fees and everything. That comes to right at $1.8 million revenue for the city. So, you know, it's, every little bit helps, and that's significant, and spending $120,000, $120,000 for extra inspections and people on the weekends to help protect those homeowners that may be taken advantage by scrupulous, unscrupulous roofers is definitely a good expenditure of money as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Can we have a motion for approval on 1F, seconded? Please poll the council on item 1F.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Womble voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, if needed, and the public, followed by council discussion and questions. I'm going to ask everybody to please keep your all comments germane to the subject. Item two is Council Bill 16-2009. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number 16-2009, an ordinance providing for a zone change from C1 Commercial 1 and C1 Commercial 1 with use restrictions to planned commercial development and for approval of an outline development plan for property located at 11808 West 44th Avenue, case number WZ-09-03 RV America. The applicant requests approval of a zone change from C1 and C1 with use restrictions to planned commercial development and for approval of an outline development plan for property located at 1108 West 44th Avenue. Because the applicant does not have a specific development scenario, the case is being processed with a nonspecific ODP which establishes just permitted land use and development standards. A future specific ODP will be required when an application for site development is proposed, requiring additional public hearings in front of the Planning Commission and City Council. No physical changes are proposed for the property at this time. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval with conditions at a public hearing held on June 18, 2009.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 16-2009 will be assigned ordinance 1447.
Thank you. If you're here tonight to speak on this agenda item, please stand and raise your right hand. It's staff and public and applicant. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. We'll move on to staff presentation. Please state your name and your position with the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WZ-0903, which is a request for approval of a zone change from C1 and C1 with use restrictions to planned commercial development and for approval of an outline development plan. Property location is 11808 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file, and packet materials and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification has been met. Therefore, council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. I would point out that as I was sitting in the audience, listening to the public comment, I was handed three letters. They are all noted as being legal protests, but I think, it's my opinion that only one is valid, and that is from the property owner at 4350 Tabor Street. I have done the calculation earlier today in anticipation of this possibly happening, and I would note that it doesn't appear to meet the 20 percent. So again, a legal protest has been filed.
Did you say it does or doesn't?
It does.
Okay.
So with that, let's get on with the presentation. The property is comprised of three parcels, 3.5 acres in size, and has frontage on West 44th Avenue and Tabor Streets. There is an existing structure located right in this location, which is used as a sales office. RV sales are displayed on the front portion, and the remainder of the site is used for RV storage. There is a six-foot-high brick wall, brick and wooden fence that runs along Tabor Street, and another fence running behind that building which separates off the storage area. The rear parcel is a road-based surface, and there are no other structures on the site. Currently, three existing curb cuts to 44th Avenue, however, only the center one is being used. This is an aerial photograph of the property, and it is outlined in red. You could see the uses on it, essentially the RVs being stored in the sales area, and then, of course, the existing building. The property was rezoned in 1993 from RC, which is restricted commercial, and A1, agricultural one, to C1 on the three subject parcels that comprise the site. The zoning was heavily conditioned with, including the requirement for construction of the fence along Tabor, closure of curb cuts, and also use restrictions on parcel B. The front two pieces, which are right in this location, are both Zoned C1 without any special conditions. However, the rear piece, which is the majority, about two-thirds of the rest of the property, is Zoned C1 with one use, and that's for RV storage. It is the request tonight by the property owner to try to rezone the property to get additional uses on the rear, and they are required to rezone to a planned development based on current zoning code requirement. This is a copy of the zoning map. Again, the property is outlined in red. All of this reddish area does designate C1 zoning, and some of those adjacent land uses include to the east an existing lumberyard again, Zone C1. That's on the, kind of the northern, adjacent to the northern half of the site. We've got C1 to the west as well, which is an office warehouse. It does have a little piece of purple, which is C2 zoning, which was originally meant to allow servicing of semi-trailers. Let's see, we've got Tabor Lake down here to the southwest, Zone A1, and then we've got agricultural one on the south, and also on this other portion to the east, Zone A1 used for single-family residences. There are some various types of commercial across the street, including the Heiney's Fruit Market Grocery Store, Zone C1. Also, property, which is currently vacant, which was purchased by CDOT for relocation of the off-ramps to the new location. Moving quickly through some pictures, this first slide is looking at the front of the property. If you look on the very left-hand side, this street over here is Tabor Street, excuse me. So moving along, again, along the front going west, you can see the existing curb cut at this location, and then, again, some of the vehicles in the owner's inventory. This is a shot of the existing building on the property, and then looking into the interior of the site where the gates close and the RVs are being stored. This shot is looking north on Tabor Street. Heiney's Market is over on the left-hand side. We've got multifamily over on the right. And this is looking south on Tabor Street. Subject property is on the right. Over on the left-hand side is the existing lumberyard. I believe it's called Rocky Mountain Forest Products. Tabor Street, I would note, is only 20 feet wide. There was a neighborhood meeting held on March 18 in accordance with the zoning code. There were seven folks in attendance, primarily from the Tabor Street to the south, and quite a bit of discussion about the different uses being proposed, the impacts on Tabor and so on. Also, a lot of discussion on the CDOT improvements. We did go through a full referral process on the property, and because there's no proposed changes at this point, we will do that again when we get a specific development proposal if the property is rezoned tonight. Our fire protection district will require looped water lines and hydrants. They also might need access from Tabor Street to the rear portion of the property. CDOT, although they don't have jurisdiction with the property, they are asking that upon future redevelopment that all unnecessary curb cuts be closed just to help the functionality of the new off-ramps. Value water, again, additional looped lines. Let's see what else we have here. Economic development does support the request, and believes it's appropriate to allow the market to dictate how the development pattern happens on the property. Wheat Ridge Public Works is requesting a 20-foot right-of-way reservation for the entire length of Tabor, starting up at 44th and all the way down to the southern boundary. They've asked that some notes be added on to the document. Also, that at the point of specific development plan, that there be a traffic analysis submitted with that so we can fully understand how the traffic will work onsite and offsite. And finally, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, this is located within their jurisdiction, and they have concluded that the zone change is inconsistent with the current plan. However, the ramp relocations will really impact the area, making additional commercial uses a more viable option for the property owner. This is the actual ODP itself. The applicant in this case has chosen the conceptual ODP, which establishes just use, allowed uses on the property and development parameters. If the property is rezoned tonight before anything can happen, they will have to come back for the specific ODP, which again requires neighborhood meeting, Planning Commission, and City Council public hearings. The permitted uses, we started with the C1 Zone District and started removing some of those uses that we thought were undesirable and possibly more impacted to the neighborhood, and that would include things like auto sales and service repair, carpet cleaning, equipment rental agencies, and so on and so forth. There are some uses which will be allowed to have drive-throughs, what we classify as a soft drive-through, including banks, coffee shops, laundry and dry cleaning stores, and pharmacies. Let's see what else. This document also sets the development parameters, and what we're looking at is the standard 20 percent landscape coverage on the property. They are proposing an FAR, a floor area ratio of .5 to 1, which would end up being about, could end up being as much as 77,000 square feet of commercial space on the property. Building heights have been tailored to address kind of the buffering for those adjacent residences. The first portion, excuse me, the front portion of the property, which we're calling Development Area A, has a 50-foot building height limitation. The rear portion, if I can get my cursor to work here, down in this location, which is Development Area B, has a 35-foot height limitation, which is consistent with all of the residential zone districts as well as the ag zone districts which are adjacent to the property. The proposed ODP does show two accesses each on both of the streets, two on 44th and two on Tabor. These access points may or may not be appropriate based on a future development plan. Again, as I mentioned, we would require a traffic analysis be submitted with that application so we can understand how that will function properly. They are showing the 20-foot reservation requested by Public Works just down to the midpoint of the property. Public Works had requested that it be extended the entire length. That was one of the conditions, a recommended conditions of staff's report to Planning Commission. Planning Commission did not make that a condition, so therefore they're showing just a half-width dedication, excuse me, reservation down to the midpoint on the property. A couple of things which are impacting this property specifically is the relocation of the I-70 on and off ramps. They are in the past, well, they will be, I think, construction starts in October, so it's really gearing up, but the ramps are going to be relocated from the current locations sort of around the Ward Road area to right opposite the property. Now, I marked on this exhibit where the property location is right here. This is the location of the new on and off ramps with a signalized intersection. Staff feels that the relocation dramatically changes the commercial development potential of this property, and that allowing the additional uses on the southern two-thirds will allow a currently underutilized commercial property to be more successful and be developed into a tax-generating business. This is another view of that. This is actually a copy of the construction plans. Again, the subject property is in this location right here, and here is where all these vehicles will be entering and exiting from the I-70 interstate system. Second thing that I need to really go into depth about is the comprehensive plan. This is a copy of an excerpt from the Fruitdale Subarea Plan, which was adopted as an addendum to the comprehensive plan. The subject property is over on this left-hand side, directly adjacent to the boundary of it. And I would point also that there is being shown a commercial node at this location, which again is at the intersection of 44th and Tabor. However, what's being shown on the property is commercial in the front, and I believe it's single-family residential on the rear. The property is also located within the 44th Avenue, Ward Road redevelopment area, and as such, Urban Renewal did respond to a referral I sent to them. Again, the Urban Renewal Plan is somewhat similar to the Fruitdale Plan. It shows commercial on the front and residential on the rear. Now, both of those plans were adopted in the early, I want to say, the early 2000s, and neither of them recognized that the property's been used since 1993 as commercial. And while it is inconsistent with those residential classifications, we think there's enough changed condition in the area with the proposed relocation of the ramps that could merit approval of the request. And let me just talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. It really is to be used as an advisory document for general advice in making policy decisions. There's also several There's also several chapters in, or sections in Chapter 26, including chapter, or Section 112, which is the Zone Change Chapter, which applies to the consideration of private zone change requests. And I'm going to read a little bit of the purpose statement, and it says that if a proposed amendment, meaning a zone change, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, then the request may only be approved if it can be demonstrated that the request is justified because of changed or changing conditions in the area and the city. And again, staff does feel like these changing conditions could merit approval of the zone change. This is a zone change request, and so what we've had to do is draw some conclusions based on the criteria. But before I get into that, I'd like to go ahead and read those zone change criteria for the council, council people, and the audience. The first criteria is whether there's an existing classification currently, yeah, an existing zone classification shown on the zoning map, which is an error, and staff, of course, has concluded that there is not. The second one is whether there's a change in character in the area occurred due to installation of public facilities, other zone changes, new growth trends, deterioration or development transitions. Staff feels that there has been quite a bit of change in the western area of the city with the annexations for Cabela's, the Highway 58, I-70 interchange improvements, and then, of course, the new ramp relocation, which, again, will greatly impact this property and make it, could make it a very desirable piece of commercial land. It continues that the Planning Commission, your city council, excuse me, shall also find the evidence that supports the finding, and at least four of the following. The first one of those is whether there's a change in zone, is in conformance, or will bring the property into conformance with the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, policies, and other related policies. Again, while the comp plan designations show residential on the rear, we do feel that there are changed conditions, which, again, could support, support and merit approval of the zone change for the property. Second one is the proposed change of zone is compatible with the surrounding area, and there will be minimal adverse impacts considering the benefits. Now, obviously, this is a conceptual outline development plan. We've tried to work with the applicant to write in certain safeguards for the neighborhood. Obviously, there is, sorry about that. Let me just back up a second previous. When and if they do apply for the specific ODP, there'll have to be very critical, a critical look at that transition between the adjacent residential zone ag, but also making sure that any sort of impacts are minimized. Next criteria is there will be social, recreational, physical, and/or economic benefits to the community. Obviously, if the property is rezoned to allow more uses on it, if it redevelops, there will certainly be economic development benefits. The next one, adequate infrastructures are available to serve the uses proposed. All of the responding agencies have indicated that they can serve the property with improvements at the developer's expense. Whether the change of zone will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare. Again, the ODP does take into consideration those adjacent residential areas. One of the things that we've included on the plan is there are to be no drive-through facilities on that rear piece. We've also tried to make sure that there's some compatibility with the height restriction of 35 feet on the rear. And finally, whether the application is in substantial compliance with the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Well, since they're not proposing anything specific at this point, that would be a review we would do if and when they come back to ask for the specific ODP. Planning Commission did give a recommendation of approval on June 18th. There were several conditions of approval, and I'll just go through those quickly. The first one is that drive-through uses be limited to Development Area A. This has been accomplished by a note on the document. That Use 26, which are, I believe, greenhouses and landscape nurseries, be modified to allow outside display and storage. Use 55 be eliminated. That has, that was actually a mini-storage use, and the applicant did agree to remove that from the list of permitted land uses. That there, a note be added regarding access points being assessed at the next step, and they have done that as well. That Public Works notes be added. Again, kind of, depending on what happens to Tabor Street, whether council feels it's appropriate for the half, the half reservation or the full reservation, we would have to use some sense in applying those notes. And finally, Planning Commission recommended that Use 34, which are hotels and motels, be eliminated, and this is one that they have not followed. They would like to keep that on their list of permitted land uses. So that does conclude my presentation. I will be here to answer questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Would the applicant like to make any comments? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, and your address, please.
My name is Mike Pharo, spelled P-H-A-R-O. My address is 7777 South Depew Street in Littleton, 80128. I am a land planning consultant. I'm here assisting the owner of RV America, Mr. Harry Sack, with our presentation, and obviously, we're here to answer any questions. Every time I'm here, I have to suggest that the presentation that Meredith gives covers so much that there's only a few things that I need to go into, so I'll make it quick. We think that this boils down to a couple of critical situations here. Obviously, as Meredith talked about, the CDOT ramps are going to be a major change to that area, and based on my other contacts in the commercial real estate business, the commercial developers in the community, they're aware of that, and they're already looking at the West 44th Avenue corridor to take advantage of that in any number of ways. The second thing that's critical here, on behalf of RV America, is the economy, the economy, the economy. We've all heard about that. It seems that the car dealers seem to be getting all the press with things that are going on, but believe me, those who are in the recreation vehicle markets, it's no less so. With context back to Wichita, Kansas, I can tell you what the flying recreational vehicle markets are, and they're not much. So whether it flies, or floats, or it's on wheels, RVs, it's a tough time now. And what that translates to is a market and a property that if RVs, as has historically been used on the property, if that market slackens, this property is not zoned for anything else. The size of the C1 zoning to the north of the property is so limited that few contemporary users would look at that, and obviously, the entire rearage of the property is zoned only for RV storage. If that goes away, well, then what do you do with the property? So our methodology here is to provide options in the marketplace, so that commercial developers can come to you then with specific proposals and make use of this property. The very good news here is that your Department of Community Development has organized your zoning and your site plan submittals, so that, on the one hand, we can give you a document tonight that probably does more to speak to the design of what will be on this property than most generalized land use plans that I've been involved in. And certainly, as Meredith said, you will get a second shot when specific users come to you with specific plans for this property. But we've worked very hard to recognize the unique characteristics of this property as it relates to the fabric of your community. Now, we can't control the fact that the comprehensive plan did not jive with existing zoning for the past 16 years. Those are things that, those just happen. But nonetheless, we've got commercial property here that has to be planned for the ultimate design that recognizes the lower-intensity uses to the back, and we've done that in several ways. The first thing we did is, is that we did not accept the widening of Tabor Avenue all the way back to where it impacted that existing and unique single-family neighborhood. We have lessened the allowable intensity of uses to the south of the property, what we call Development Area B on the zoning map. So that those uses that are more commercial-oriented, more streetscape, traffic-oriented towards 44th, will occur to the north. Lesser-intensity uses, lower-sized buildings, greater setbacks, more perimeter buffering, that will occur to the back, and recognize the single-family and the open-space zones and uses that are there. That's what we've tried to accomplish on that. I think you've got in your packet a reduction of some illustratives that we prepared, showing how a variety of these uses can go on the property. I've shown a hotel or a motel located to the north, where it relates more to West 44th, and then you simply have a parking lot next to the open space and single-family uses, as opposed to recreation vehicle storage. Lower office buildings to the back on this schematic with a fast-food restaurant relating to the traffic in the off-ramps on 44th. Here's one with a retail component and residential to the back. When we met with the homeowners in our neighborhood meeting, they suggested that the existing use is compatible with the area, so we have retained it on the list of allowable uses. They suggested that residential would be a compatible thing. I don't know that the marketplace would recognize that, but we have left residential on the list of allowable uses. So between the list of uses that we gave you, the design parameters that we can give you at this time, we think that we've got a proposal here, put in place in no small part by your community development department, that meets the objectives of the city, meets the objectives of the landowner, and recognizes the existing fabric of the community. That's where we are tonight.
Thank you. We're going to go on to public comment, and then we may have more questions for you. The next process is public comment. Please step forward to the podium and spell your last name, and give us your last name and first name, spell your last name for the record, and your address, or your city.
T-I-P-T-O-N Diane. The address is 4311 Tabor. I'm on the south side of this property. I'm hearing a lot of excitement about, because of Cabela's, how, you know, and the building of the light rail, how it can just magically turn this into a little more of a commercial area, but I really don't see how that is possible, considering there's only one road. There's only one road there, and that's 44th. You can cross the highway at Ward Road, you can cross the highway on Tabor. There's the creek, there's the highway there. You know, just, I don't see how there's going to be that much more traffic on 44th that can, that's going to be so much better. I don't think too much of the Cabela traffic is going to be going down 44th. It'll be going down I-70 and be going down 32nd and 38th, probably. Not too much down 44th. When it comes to the comprehensive plan, that was along, you know, like they're saying, a while ago, but when Weaver sold this property to the Brewers, it was, you know, a vacant lot, and they just wanted to do something with it, so they made RV storage out of it. There's, I believe there's still two wells on this land, which is very, very, when you're looking now at population growth and housing, I believe that the neighborhood south of 44th would be better utilized to see in the future more high-end building. That are, we have old houses, we have older people owning the houses, not just on our street, but down 44th, that are very, very unique, not only to the metro area and to Wheat Ridge, but to any large city in this country. There does not have the amenities of a trail like this, where people can have their children and their horses riding on a trail where they're not having to trailer them anywhere, they're not having to deal with traffic at all, with, you know, this land is going to be worth a lot of money, especially when you have the light rail. In New York City, people walk. This light rail will be walking distance from our homes, from our homes on Tabor. These are large, most of these properties are large lots, most of these properties have water rights, they're single-family, they're very underappreciated by the city of Wheat Ridge, and it's not just on Tabor, it's other homes along the southern side of 44th, down to the Green Belt. I work at Hazen Research, just two blocks up from where I work, and I work next to Ball Metal and Willamette, or it's, yeah, Willamette Box Company. There's houses there right now selling for a million, they're almost a million dollars.
Ms. Tip, I'm going to have to ask you to keep your comments to the rezoning of the property that's in question here, if you can, please, to talk about the...
Well, I'm trying to talk about how our, this is going to hurt our value of our property. And I'm just showing that there's properties that don't have any of the amenities that we have, right next door to a fire station, downwind from the Coors Bottling Water Treatment Plant, and next to two big factories, and our company, and those are, they have no land, they have no park, they have no nothing, and those are million-dollar homes on a spot that is not even as large as the 10 homes on Tabor. You know, to have this be commercial all the way down that far into our neighborhood is going to bring down the value of our land a lot. And when we're at a point where, in the next 10 or 15 years, the value of our land is going to go up a lot. Now, when Harry bought this property, we had a discussion about RVs and that they're luxury, and why the neighborhood didn't really want to change zoning for a whole total sale thing, because then it was going to change the zoning of the land, and when the economy goes up and goes down like it does, the luxuries are the first things to be hit, and he's, I'm sure, being hit very badly. But the RV storage, as the town gets, cities get closer and closer and closer, and there's more rules on where you can keep your stuff and you can't have it, are, the need for storage is becoming more and more intimate. My company sold some land across the street. They didn't even have their land for a year. They had to follow all the codes, and they made over, they made, they netted...
Mr. Gokhi.
You know, I'm appreciating your concern for your neighborhood. It's just, we're here for a rezoning of a property...
And, okay...
...that doesn't go to the facts that you're presenting. Those are not, those are not reasons to turn this down.
But leaving it as it is, as I'm just getting ready to tell you, is...
Well, I wish you would just stick to the point of the hearing, okay? Meandering kind of gets us confused.
I don't see why I'm off of it.
Okay, everybody just quit arguing. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, we sold it, and in less than a year, their net profit, because I know the people that own this RV place, was almost a million dollars, and they had to do all of the scraping and the drainage and all of that. This property, remaining as RV storage or something similar like that, is going to, you know, it's going to generate money for the city, and it has very minimal impact on our street. With the building of the highway, we've already had, the city's already had to build a turnaround at the end of our street for traffic that comes down our street by accident. If there's a bigger commercial area right there at our street that's only 20 feet wide, we're going to have a lot more people driving down the street by accident, and that's going to very negatively affect our life. Some places, there's no place for the kids to ride their bikes, where a car can go around them. It's just, having it come down that low is very unsafe for our neighborhood, and is not, and is not, I didn't mean to hit that button, and isn't, and just isn't a good idea. It's, that land, the way that it is, can be used in a lot of ways, and there hasn't been a problem for people to come and approach the city on different ways to use that land, as is the American and our way of doing things. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward. Anybody else like to make a comment on this rezon... Anybody else like to make a comment on this rezoning before I move on to council comments? Please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address, please.
My last name is Marco, M.A.R.K.O.W. First name is Ron.
Thank you.
Well, we don't want this building over there changed the way it is. I have to agree with that gentleman over there that first came out about all the changes that's going on in Wheat Ridge. But I got some good news for you. I really want to appreciate for all that debris and the logs that we get rid of, and that was a good place, a good thing that you folks did, and that's about one of the good things I can say for you. But we don't want anything done in the corner there, because we want you to leave it as it is and reverse it back to A1. Now, they told me I'm crazy, but you know, you guys, when you get done voting here now, it's going to be forever. And I've seen this happen all over the United States, all these changes that you're making without a rezoning it, it's going to stay forever, and you're never going to be able to change it again. And we've got, when you go past his place over there, it's like you're going in a new little world. It's like, it's a unique little place in Wheat Ridge. And that's what I always liked about Wheat Ridge is because it's kind of laid back, and well, we still farm down there at the end of the street, but I don't want to come out that street and see a great big monstrosity building out there at the end. And I think it's going to re-affect the resale value of our property also. And by the way, that property that you're talking about, on the back end, that's lakefront property. That can be residential, can be very attractive and very, you can get some good price for that, and the taxes will be good, you'd be happy about that. I guess you guys don't get it, but I know you do what you want to do anyways. But I know you accommodated Harry over here when you rezoned it back in '93, and I wanted you to accommodate us and rezon it back the way it was. And that's about all I got to say about it, and I can't tell you anymore, I can't beat the thing in the ground anymore than that.
Okay, thank you for coming. Hello, Janice.
You knew I'd be here.
Well, welcome. Please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
Janice Thompson, T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N., and I live in the city of Wheat Ridge. I live in this area, and I prefer not to give my address over the TV, please. I have bronchitis, so I have trouble here.
Janice, could you speak to the microphone, please? She said she has lungitis.
This, this land was very poorly rezoned to C1 years ago, but as the planning commissioner had stated on this hearing that they had, it's that this is not the case that we can undo this rezoning, but I think it is a case that we can really look at with different eyes, because the zoning does not belong all the way down a residential street as a C1. Wheat Ridge has other sites that do not comply to the comprehensive plan that will also be a problem someday to residents, and some of these lands are on West 44th Avenue, and you can look at the maps and see those yourself. So because this rezoning should never have happened on the southern part of this partial, all considerations should go to the residential neighborhood. Yes, it is an expense and an inconvenience to the landowner, but the city needs to step up and prove that they are also, that they also care about the residential neighborhoods as much as they do the commercial. Right now, Wheat Ridge has a great opportunity to begin improving this part of town. You do not need to put high-impact commercial next to this or any other residential property. There's enough land in this part of the town that is zoned commercial that can have the higher-impact businesses without affecting residential neighborhoods. Give the residential neighborhoods a reason to improve themselves. When you live under a black cloud of doubt, that being, what is the city going to allow next to my property, it makes it difficult to invest. Let this neighborhood know you care. Let them know that the Green Belt is an important asset worth preserving. Let them know that you, that you want this to be a viable residential area with those living there to remain as homeowners, not as renters. Wheat Ridge is trying to improve the owner-occupied ratio in this city right now, because we have so many renters. Let this be one of those areas that remains affordable and will be remaining under home ownership. And I do want to make a little comment here. We don't live far away from this area, and we have the same amenities that these people have. We have Tabor Lake, we have the Green Belt, we have two lakes behind our properties, and we have Clear Creek. Some of our neighbors have gone in for refinancing, and the interesting thing is, is they are having, the banks are having a hard time finding comparable things to compare this to, because there's not a lot of areas in the Denver metro area that has as many amenities as this has. Yes, we have the interstate, but so do some, you know, look at Sixth Avenue West, what they look at, you know, but they don't have what we have. And houses on our street have not gone down in value, they have maintained their value. But all over other parts of the city, homes are losing their value, so there is a real value in this Green Belt. This is one of, going to be one of the gateways now to the city of Wheat Ridge since the ramps are being moved, and what impression do you want to give to those that are entering the city? Years ago, there was talk about trying to improve the access for all of these businesses in here, and I wish the city would go back to revisiting that, that they could possibly combine the access with this piece of property, with the adjoining properties to the west, and improve the access all the way around that whole area, so that they can utilize that light in a safe manner. Because no matter how you try to get traffic in and out of this piece of property, you are going to adversely affect the movement of traffic off of Tabor Street and 44th, and also the on-and-off ramps. So I think you need to be very, very careful as to what you put in there and how much impact that you're going to be causing onto 44th Avenue. I think you need to deny all access from this property onto Tabor Street, period. Tabor Street does not need to take the brunt of this. We have commercial on our street, and we get a lot of commercial traffic coming down our street, and our street says "dead end," and they still come down, and we'll ask them, "Why are you down here?" And they go, "Well, we thought there was a way out." They don't understand what the word "dead end" means. If I wasn't on TV, I'd tell you what it means. But anyway, and I think these people, it's real important to deny fast-food restaurants. They're smelly, they usually have a trash problem, and vehicles come and go all hours, and I don't care if you put it right on 44th, it still has an impact on those residential homes. You need to require that the fence remain along the eastern boundary and also the southern boundary, and require that it be maintained. The city had Walmart build the fence to protect the residents on 38th Avenue, and also a wall was required for the Becker property off of 32nd and Youngfield. This neighborhood is no different. It is people being affected by commercial. We should not have a different standard just because the homes have a different selling price. I think you need to really be careful with all the outside lighting that happens here so the residential people aren't affected. Monument signs or very low signage is the only signage that should be allowed. No trash or outside storage along the east or southern boundary should be allowed because of the residential property and also this lake. And we should do everything we can to enhance the Green Belt area. I would say no motels. When the motel was built, when that Tabor Lake motel was built originally, the developer came to my house and tried to sell me on the project, and my first question to him was, "Are you going to rent these rooms by the hour or by the day?" Now, you look at the police record and see the problems that we have with the motels in the city of Wheat Ridge, and you tell me that you want to put more motels and hotels, it is not something that we need to have. If you want motels and hotels, put them down by Cabela's, because that will have the least effect on other people around. Many cities utilize lakes and creeks in their design as an asset. This northern boundary of Lakewood, of Tabor Lake is or has been plagued by outside storage of tires, parked semis, and adjacent hotel that is not landscaped to the rear, so when people are on the Green Belt, the view is much to be desired. Take this piece of property and have it as the beginning of a major cleanup of that commercial strip. Use it to set high standards that you require in other parts of the city. If you do not protect this neighborhood and it becomes rundown, the commercial will also be affected. Help these residents on Tabor to continue taking pride in their very special secluded neighborhood. You might not want to live here yourself, but trust me, homes along the Green Belt sell very quickly. They do not stay on the market very long, and they are an asset. The residential people are the ones that shop and use your commercial developments that you want to put throughout the city, so do take into consideration how valuable your residents are to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on this agenda item before we go on to council questions? Please come on up and spell your last name for the record and state your address or your
My name is Margie Brown. I live at 4350 Tabor. Hi, Harry. I just was thinking about all this, how it's affecting us, and I'm not very good at talking, but, so I wrote something down. "To the city of Wheat Ridge regarding our corner neighbor, Harry/RV America. We, as people, understand in this hard times of our country has fallen into. It is not easy on anyone, whether you are a businessman or just a regular person. We understand that if Harry changed the commercial zoning on this property, it would make it more desirous to a buyer interested in such a big piece of land. But we live here too, and all this land was neighborhood and farmland before it ever went commercial, and we are all scared of how it will affect our neighborhood. From a quiet, peaceful place to live in to God knows what, how would you like to live next to a hotel or a restaurant and all kinds of people, noise, and smell? We, George and I, at 4350 Tabor, would be more directed by whatever went on at Harry's land than anyone else. Do you think we could get a fair price for our property living next to God knows what? We were hit hard by Mother Nature on July 20th, but that, we had no choice in that matter. This we have a matter in, and we do not want commercial all the way to 4350 Tabor. That is going to disrupt our lives and our way of living. Thank you."
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on this agenda item before we go on to council questions and comments? Okay, thank you for speaking. We're going to move on to council questions. Councilman Gokhi.
Mr. Dahl, in cases like this, there's pertinent matters that need to be addressed, whether you're approving or disapproving a zoning. I wish you could go over those so the general public and council could understand exactly what our parameters are.
Sure. Meredith presented them in her staff report and also orally, and if you look at pages four through seven of the staff report, that lists the conditions in Code Section 112, which is the section on private rezoning. This is private rezoning, and it lists the conditions that have to apply, and if they don't apply, or if you find that they do not apply, your finding that they don't apply serves as a basis for denial if you choose to deny. You'll notice those, beginning on the bottom of page four, are that the existing zone classification's in error, while we've had some testimony that it would be good if we're downzoned to A1. That's probably not a reason to deny an upzone, but instead, the real action usually in rezoning is the remaining criteria, which start at the top of page five. That one is that a change in the character of the area has occurred. That's one of the criteria, and you can, there's evidence in the record that you can evaluate to determine whether you believe a change in the area has occurred due to the various things listed there, installation, public facilities, et cetera, other zone changes, new growth trends, development transitions. Also, at the bottom of page five, there's another series of criteria, and you have to find at least four of those criteria apply. It'll bring it into conformance with the comprehensive plan. You heard testimony on the comprehensive plan, that the proposed change of zone is compatible with the surrounding area, and there will be no adverse impacts, and you've heard testimony, I think probably especially from the landowners on that, or the property owners on that, on that point. Not telling you how to feel about the testimony, but I'm telling you that's the kind of evidence that's relevant to this standard. That there will be social, recreational, physical, or economic benefits derived by the change of zone, and you've heard probably the applicant's case for that in terms of what they feel the change of zone will do in terms of economic, physical, et cetera, benefits to the community. That's another criterion. The last three are on page seven of the staff report, that there's adequate infrastructure to serve the development. That's usually water, sewer, streets, lighting, primarily streets probably in this particular case. You've heard testimony on what is proposed for the streets, what the applicant's willing to do and not. The change of zone will not adversely affect public health or safety by creating excessive traffic, congestion, drainage, reducing light and air, and you've heard testimony probably from both the applicant and the residents on that. And lastly, whether the applications in compliance with our Architectural and Site Design Manual, because this is a concept-level rezoning, we don't have proposals for actual structures and locations, and the staff has indicated they believe that criterion's not applicable, and I agree with them. It's not one that you can say yes or no to on this application. So it seemed to me the ones that obviously you would want to focus on would be whether there's been a change in the area, and whether there's, this brings it into conformance with the cop plan, whether there's impacts that you judge to be acceptable or unacceptable on the neighborhood. Those are the heart of the review criteria for private rezoning, as stated in the code and also in the staff report.
Mr. Dahl, if someone wanted to, as far as council, put restrictions in, what is our latitude in putting restrictions on this type of plan?
Well, we've had in the past rezonings that have, that have contained conditions, and the council has done that. In fact, the zoning that's in front of you contain conditions as a result of the, as a result of the original zoning on the property. I've, under the, over the years, advised that conditional zoning, particularly where you have a concept plan, is difficult because we don't have standard in the code allowing conditions. It's really a yes-no, other, outside of the PUD context. I won't, I admit that there has been a practice here in Wheat Ridge of imposing conditions as a condition of rezoning, and we've not had those conditions challenged. I would prefer that there be a better basis in the code for it, but we have a longstanding practice of applying conditions to rezoning approvals in the city.
Questions?
I just need to see if I got any more questions on my notes, please. Is conversations about the existing outline development plan pertinent to this case?
Well, what's pertinent is what the information that's presented in this hearing.
Okay.
So you need to restrict the decision you make tonight to the evidence that you heard in this hearing, not information you would have derived elsewhere. It has to have been presented in the hearing.
Okay. Well, and that can be the testimony from the citizens.
Absolutely. That's, that's part of the evidence.
Thank you.
Ms. Berry.
Yes, Meredith, if I recall correctly, the setback for commercial-abiding commercial is different than commercial-abiding residential in the code, the minimum setback?
Actually, you know, that's a little bit hard to answer. I think what you're referring to, Ms. Berry, are, say, the buffering requirements, the landscaping, parking lot buffering, when you're, when you've got a commercial business adjacent to residential, has to be upgraded with the minimum of a six-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot fence or a 15-foot strip of landscaping, and I might not be answering your question.
I think it's setback, but I don't have the code in front of me, so I can't look. But you're sure this meets, it's consistent setback across the property, so it meets, it meets whatever minimum setback.
Correct, correct. The other, the only thing that would be different about there is I believe there's a build-to line on, from 44th of zero to 20 feet, and that's per the Architectural and Site Design Manual.
Okay. In looking at the planning commission comments, the comments concerning motels were more subjective than land use. It seemed, it went to quality of existing rather than, than land use impacts. It seemed, it went to quality of existing rather than land use impacts. Could you speak to, from your perspective, what you think the land use impacts would be of that, and whether you think it's an acceptable use? It is a small property for...
It is, and I think your point is well-taken, that in planning commission, there was testimony from, and discussion with the commissioners about some of the existing hotels in the city, and how there have been unsavory types of activities at those hotels. From a land use perspective, probably because there is a build-to line, if a hotel were to go in, it would be pushed up towards 44th, and the rest of the property would be used as parking lot and landscaping, essentially. And there are associated impacts with that as well, but we, again, would be reviewing a design to make sure those impacts are minimized upon some sort of formal submittal.
So three and a half, you think a three and a half acre site is large enough for...
I know, and I know that their landscape architect worked a little bit with the design. He might be able to substantiate that argument better than I, since he did work on it.
Okay. You know, it's hard in any use to, I mean, there can always be a bad actor in any use, and it goes to management of that use. You know, we have some motels in the city which are good property owners, and they're an asset to the community, and we have some that are not. And looking at this, we have to look at what that land use impacts are in terms of traffic and visual impact and things like that. Some of those more subjective uses are very hard to judge at this stage fairly.
Ms. Tola?
Tim, could you talk about this 20-foot wide street on Tabor?
Yes, I can. The current street width is 20 feet wide.
Okay.
The minimum standard street is 50, and the minimum standard commercial street is 60. So staff's recommendation at this time is to acquire or ensure adequate street width ultimately for Tabor Street. The property owner at this time is asking for a land use decision from you on the west side of Tabor. And if we have a 20-foot reserve for future street widening on that side, we would have a 40-foot street. And if we had a similar action occur on the east side, we'd be consistent and ask for another 20 feet on that side of the street, and that way we'd end up with a 60-foot street.
What is the safety issue? Can a fire truck get down there?
A fire truck certainly wouldn't want to go down a 20-foot street. And this particular area, a lot of times there are encumbrances along the 20-foot area that we have now for a street. So this is more an alley than a street. A typical alley is 16 feet wide, so if you want to put this in relationship with a normal street system, this 20-foot street operates more like an alley than a street.
Okay, thank you. And is it, does it go all the way through, or does it dead-end? I can't remember. I know I've been down there, but I, does it...
The street just dead-ends currently, and there has been some effort to try to provide some way for folks to turn around without using private driveways.
Thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Since I introduced this item, and I'm first reading, and I introduced it today for second reading, I guess I want to make some comments about it. I do appreciate all the people that have come and spoke with regards to this. I have driven down that street, and, you know, it's a challenge to get in there just to your houses. I know that we can't reverse this back to an A1, so I'm okay with that. I just, I don't want to put conditions on this property. We either zone it, we either change the zoning and remove the restrictions with the limits that they've already accepted, or we leave it as it is. But I don't want to put conditions on it. Olinger had conditions, and that ended up being a very terrible thing to have to go through again. So I don't want to have conditions if we can prevent that. I don't want the citizens that live back there to have a harder time getting back and forth to their houses. I look at this property, and I do want 44th to look so much better than it does. I hope that, you know, with commercial development on the front end of it, it could look better. And with the highway interchange moving, we're going to at least get a light on 44th between Ward Road and Kipling, which will help a little bit with you, with citizens trying to get out of their property. So that's a plus. My question sort of is, if there's a 55-foot limit to the front of the property, I mean, could a hotel actually, I mean, of any size, be put on that property with that limit?
Well, most of the hotels in the city have that same height restriction, 50 feet, and so they're usually two to three stories.
Okay, two to three.
Could I assist with that?
Yes.
Can you go ahead and use the mic, please?
I'm sorry, yes. The plan that you see here is taken directly from one of two hotels that I'm currently involved in. This particular hotel is being built in Rifle, Colorado. We're building another one right up there where I-70 hits Morrison. So what I'm bringing you here is a realistic outlook of a three-story structure in one instance. These things are done by the hotel, the motel people, to fit the location they're in. They can take a look at the demographics and tell whether that's a three-story building, a four, or five. I noticed the hotel that's just a little bit west of here, I think, is a four-story unit. So that's one of the details that gets worked out after you have the zoning allowance to get into the land use, and then those kind of details are, they come along by the people who know those particular markets.
I actually also have a concern with the hotel going on that property. Because of the way the hotel would have to be laid out, the hotel would have to be further forward, which puts the parking at the back. And it's harder to, you know, I guess it might encourage less savory activity at the back of a hotel, where it's not right there on the highway where there's a lot of traffic. I understand that you have that, but from what Meredith said, the hotel would have to be further up because of the alignment with the adjoining properties. So for me to have a hotel on that property, when we, when you would be putting parking more toward the back, I actually do have serious concerns about that, because we do have a lot of police in that area, and with the truck stop across the street, we don't want to encourage, you know, any other police response than we really need to have in that That's pretty much, I mean, that's what I wanted to say. I'm, I, that's it?
Thank you. I just wanted the council to be clear. Mr. Dahl, we're not actually approving those plans tonight, just the rezoning.
That's exactly right. Those plans are just kind of illustrative, but it's...
I wanted the citizens to understand that those plans are not...
Yeah, that's just an idea, but that's not something you approved tonight.
Ms. Sane?
Tim, I guess I want to ask you, this area down here has homes on it that have been there for a long time, the majority of them. And looking at this lane, that's what I would call it, I'd call it a little lane, seems to be sufficient for the property owners to use that for their needs. What do you envision would ever be the reason to make it a 55-foot street?
When we talk about street widths, we're talking about right-of-way. And so when we look at this particular proposed development, we have existing commercial on the east side of the street, and we have proposed, well, existing, and maybe an expanded use, a commercial on the west side of the street. That would lend itself to a commercial-width street, so that you could have two-way traffic, parking possibly, and sidewalk on either side of the street for those commercial activities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Womble?
I just have a quick question. I'm just wondering, over in District One, what do you think would be the average size of a residential street?
The average width of the right-of-way in most streets in Wheat Ridge is a minimum of 50 feet.
Mr. Gokhi? I think you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I, Mr. Perano, if we, this gets approved, who's going to have to move that power pole that's right in the middle of that roadway, or easement?
Today, there would just be a reserve for a street widening. When the property is developed at some future date, the developer would widen the street and be responsible for taking care of any utility adjustments. That particular, if it's a utility power pole, then, of course, the power company would be responsible for moving their facility within the city right-of-way.
I think the, our bad fire department, are they the fire department of record on this?
They are here. It's north of Clear Creek.
And they said they could service this project, they could service this area?
I'm not sure. It's not my area of expertise.
I think that's what...
They did respond to a referral and indicated that it's possible they might need an access off Tabor to the rear portion of the property. Obviously, the, if that were to happen, there would have to be, you know, the street would have to be wide enough to accommodate a fire truck. So based on, if this is approved, and based on what that future plan is, we will look at all that when we have a specific development proposal. They also indicated they needed looped water lines and hydrants and so on and so forth, but they said they could serve the property.
Yeah, and there's a cul-de-sac bulb down at the end of this that's accessory trailhead to the Greenbelt.
It's not really a cul-de-sac bulb, it just sort of ends, it's a little wider area, and I know that some of the folks...
I can turn my van around in it, so...
Hammerhead.
Please let this council member talk to the staff person, please. Thank you.
I just, I can turn my van around in it, so it's not that small. I mean, I...
I have seen garbage trucks backing out from Tabor onto 44th, honest.
Oh, and I don't doubt that. I think that's, I think that's all I have right now.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Mr. Stites?
Well, it seems to me, looking at the outlay, looking at like Tabor, whatever, we rezone that, it's going to trigger an awful lot of change, an awful lot of change. And there, and I think we do have to somewhat be respectful that there are residential areas back behind there. And I don't know about carte blanche or whatever, but I would much rather see a plan sometimes before you give somebody carte blanche or whatever. But it just seems to me, if this zoning goes, it's going to trigger a lot of changes.
Any other comments before I close the public hearing? You want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order? Ms. Langworthy? Oh, by the way, if their motion is for approval, it takes six votes of council to approve the motion if his, motion is made for approval.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to, I'm having, I'm sorry, and probably out of order, but I'm just having a very challenging time with this decision. Can I call for a recess, please? Because I really want to make sure I make the right decision on this.
So we're going to take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.[1452.46] Comment before I make it? Sorry. I just... real quick.
And just... make sure that... if you make any changes, make sure the clerk gets the change.
I'm not making... I'm not making a comment to make changes. I'm just making a quick comment. Okay. Thank you. I want everybody here to understand that this decision is not an easy decision for me to make, whether... whatever way I go with this. And I know that I'm just a person starting the ball running, and the vote of my fellow counselors will actually make that decision. I would like... I mean, personally, I would have liked to see more specifics on this before we get further on it, but that's not how it came to us. We're working with what we were given. And there will be a future chance of hearing to break down the specifics of what this property is gonna become. So, I'm gonna, um, make a motion to approve Council Bill Number 16-2009, Case Number WZ0903. A request for approval of a zone change from Commercial One and Commercial One with use restrictions to planned commercial development for approval of an outline development plan on property located at 1108 West Forty-Fourth Avenue on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after publication for the following reasons. The rear portion of the property is currently underutilized. The relocation of the I-70 on and off ramps dramatically changes the commercial development potential of this property. The evaluation criteria support approval of the request with the following condition: The use number 34 hotels and motels be eliminated from the list of permitted land uses.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval with the elimination of hotels and motels. Discussion on the main motion. Councilmember Sain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting no on this because of what is listed in the reasons for, uh, making... partial reasons for making this is that, uh, the changes that Cabela's and others suggested develop that may come in. And I have to think... we hope that will be, but they may not. Um, while I feel it may be appropriate for the front part of the property, I think the rear portion should not be developed the same way as the front. It is too large of an impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I would rather wait and see what type of development may come to this property.
Any other comments on the main motion? Mr. Goki?
I won't be supporting this either. I believe that the comprehensive plan, uh, indicates a different land use in the back of this property. Uh... I don't believe that there's been a significant change in the area other than the utilization of the existing property that's coming in for the zoning. That's it.
Mr. Wambel?
I will echo my fellow counselors in not supporting this. Um, I do not believe it's the right thing to do for the back of this property. Uh, my other reasons are, I think, a lot of the streets up in District One and District Two mirror the size of this street gutter-to-gutter. And I even live on one that's a major fire route that I see fire trucks go. Taking into consideration that it does not have the dead end on it, however, I do feel the service can be delivered.
Councilmember Langworthy?
And I guess what I want to say is that I felt like that this case at least needed to have the opportunity to be voted on without me making the decision for everyone up here on the dais. It was presented as being a motion to approve, but I also have strong concerns about the property as it's being planned. But I wanted it to be a decision of eight people, not a decision of one to... in the first place to say no. I wanted everybody to have the right to say what they wanted to say. I would... I would be voting no as well.
Okay. So, we have a motion for approval. It was seconded. Uh, please poll the council on the main motion.
Can we be clear, please? All that and...
So, we're voting on the main motion for approval as amended?
Motion fails six to two with Councilmembers Berry and Adams voting yes.
Okay. Thank you. The motion fails. Um, council, the question I wanted to ask you is, uh, does anybody have a problem doing item number six? Because the majority of the folks here tonight are item number six. If we did item number six next, any problem with that?
I so moved that we changed the order of the agenda.
Is there a second? Uh, please poll the council on moving items number six next. People of the council? We have a motion to hear item six next. It was seconded.
Just catching up to you.
Okay.
And we're still waiting for three votes.
Sorry.
I think it's them over there.
Do I do it again?
And motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We're gonna do item six next because we have a majority of folks here tonight to hear about the public hearing. Uh, just so you know, we did pass out some information about the franchise agreement. That's, uh, layman's terms. If you have a copy of that, please share it with your neighbor. Item six is Council Bill 23-2009. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Councilmember Sain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 23-2009, An Ordinance Approving a Gas and Electric Utility Franchise with the Public Service Company of Colorado. Such franchise conditioned on voter approval of the same. The executive summary: The city and the Public Service Company of Colorado, PSCO, have negotiated a franchise agreement attached as Exhibit A to the ordinance for a period of 20 years to furnish, sell, and distribute gas and electricity to the city and all residents therein. Pursuant to the City Charter, Section 15.6, no franchise shall be granted without the approval of the majority of the registered electors voting therein. This ordinance approves a franchise agreement with PSCO contingent upon a vote of the people to approve the franchise.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes. Uh, Council Bill 23-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1451.
Mr. Young, do you have any other comments beyond the executive summary?
Actually, the city attorney was gonna address the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the summary indicated, um, this is a, uh, a gas and electric franchise. The charter requires that gas and electric franchises be taken to a vote of the people. Uh, and one of the things that will happen if this ordinance passes is that there'll be a, uh, a question on the upcoming November ballot, um, with respect to the franchise and allowing people to decide whether the franchises be, uh, extended for the additional 20-year term or not. Uh, there have been notices in the paper of this hearing. Uh, that's required as a result of a state statute governing franchises, um, gas and electric public utility franchises. Uh, that's a pretty extensive publication, uh, but I want to stress that the costs of that publication are borne by PESCO, not by, uh, the city of Wheat Ridge, uh, because it's a very lengthy document. In our review of the statute, came to the conclusion that, yes, we did have to publish that. Uh, city clerk, uh, Snow was able to negotiate a very good price, actually, for that, uh, which probably advantaged PESCO. It could have been a lot higher, uh, price to publish that every day in the paper as it was. But, uh, that's a cost that PESCO experiences. Um, the franchise, uh, as much as possible, one tries to get, um, provisions in the franchise that are helpful to local jurisdictions. It's understandable that with a... effectively a monopoly, uh, it's difficult to get concessions and conditions in the franchise that are very unique because Public Service Company resists those heavily because they, of course, serve in a large part of the state and try to, if much as possible, keep the conditions more or less the same. But we have been able to, um, to get a few provisions that I think are specific to the city, uh, some with respect to purchasing materials and supplies, and also graffiti removal from, uh, Public Service Company facilities. And that's, uh, something that's really in our interest and in the company's interest. And Tim Peranto was able to negotiate those two side agreements, really, that are kind of appendices to the main franchise. Um, if there's a specific question about the franchise, Tim will help me with them. But, uh, that... I wanted to let you know that we do have to do this by ordinance, and we have to take it to election as a feature not only of the statute but of our charter.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, please step forward. I'd like to speak on item number six from the public. Please spell your last name and state your company or your address.
Thank you. Rob Osborne with Excel Energy Public Service Company, Colorado. 1225 Seventeenth Street, Denver, Colorado. 80202. Um, I just wanted to thank council, um, and the mayor and city staff for working with us on the, uh, the franchise negotiation. We believe that it benefits both the community and Excel Energy to continue our relationship for 20 more years as we have in the past. As, uh, Attorney Dahl has identified, um, the city has, uh, through the franchise negotiation, acquired a few, um, opportunities for itself with respect to, um, our operations here in the community. Um, primarily, our focus is to maintain a strong relationship with the community, with the city of Wheat Ridge to allow us to provide the lowest cost for services and utilities, um, within this jurisdiction. Um, our corporations are regulated by the Public Utility Commission, and what the franchise agreement, uh, does for you, it gives you more than what our tariffs, which our Public Utility Commission's rules on how we operate. So, you're getting benefits outside of what we do in areas that we don't have franchise agreements. In addition, the community will receive funds outside... as part of this franchise agreement, you'll get a franchise fee of 3% of the revenues that are generated from our operations. And, um, you also get a 1% fund that is set up for your underground projects when the city decides to do undergrounding of our utilities within your jurisdiction. So, again, on behalf of Excel Energy, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you for the next 20 years. Uh, we have had a good relationship with you in the past 20 years. And, um, we also wanted to thank, um, you for the proclamation of August 3rd with respect to our response to the storm conditions. We know that was very difficult for this community as the others, Arvada and Lakewood. And, uh, we had the ability to work with your staff, uh, your police department, to keep people and make communications happen to reduce the outages and the inconveniences. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward. Anybody else who wants to speak under public comment before I move on to council questions? Please spell your last name for the record.
My last name is Beaver. B-E-V. Like Victor. Okay. Um, I just wonder why we got this handout. Um, and I can't understand it. In other words, um, I just talked to somebody in the back of the room, and I guess this is an agreement for a tax or what? In other words, I got the handout, and I'm not sure what it... what it stated.
Mr. Dahl, would you please answer?
Um, this is an agreement between the city and Public Service Company, allowing Public Service Company to continue to provide gas and electric service to residents in the city.
If we didn't have this agreement, we wouldn't... we wouldn't have Public Service.
They have to have a franchise to serve in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I would have appreciated a better explanation other than the one we got. I mean, as you said, there were costs involved in printing it up, so...
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on to council questions? Please step forward and spell your last name.
My name's Grant... Craig Graham, and it's G-R-A-H-A-M. Uh, I'm just kinda concerned that we're... if we're trapped in a 20-year with, uh, the way the solar and they want us to go dependent, are we gonna be stuck with what Public Service is offering us? Or are we gonna be able to branch out, too? Or are we gonna be just stuck with that? With Public Service?
Well, this franchise, if I can answer that, this franchise authorizes Public Service to provide electric and gas service in the city. It doesn't prevent individuals from doing the kind of solar installations that are now becoming more and more popular in... and for homeowners in the state. Public Service Company itself has relationships with wind and solar producers and does some of that itself.
And does it limit the city from maybe going solar with this building here, or...
No.
Okay. That's just the only concern I have, being stuck for a 20, another 20 years.
No. A franchise doesn't stand in the way of the... the sort of individualized solar programs that run the meter backwards and run power back to the grid.
Okay. That's just all my concern.
Do we have any other comments from the public before we move on? Councilmember Berry?
Well, just to add on, there's more than just individual, um, solar power. They're looking at putting a, uh, large generating plant in Park County, uh, solar. So, I think that point was well-taken in that, uh, locking it in for, uh, length of time without having a minimum renewable energy standard could be problematic. I could see his point there. So, there are other options just between... besides just individual solar. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Miss Sain?
Well, I think it should be noted that this is not something that Public Service is requiring of us. It's what we require to have in our charter with Public Service. So, they're just complying with the city charter as we all are.
Mr. Dahl, can you explain one more time that the documents that were printed in the paper were paid for by Excel? That's really requirements by PUC? And the state?
Uh, it's a requirement of the statute. The state statute that requires us to publish that notice requires that the cost of that publication be... publication be borne by PSCO or Excel, and they are doing that.
Okay. Any more comments from council before I close the public hearing? Mr. Goki?
What is the difference between this agreement and the agreement we've had in the past?
I can answer that. For the most part, it is very similar. We have, as noted in the council action forum, tried to address some of the concerns that have arisen over the last five to 10 years concerning trimming of trees around their power lines, the repairs that they make or don't make within the streets where they have made utility repairs on their gas lines. So we've gotten some additional concessions on that. Undergrounding power lines, some concessions on trying to encourage in getting Comcast and Quest to go underground more peacefully than they have in the recent past on some of their projects. So we have fine-tuned, Mr. Goki, more than rewrote the franchise that we had.
So in other words, you would say that this is a better program than we've had in the past, because the city has more flexibility and is in a better position?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? And Mr. Snow?
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to clarify. We've received a lot of concerns, phone calls, questions as to what this is about, what the publications were about, and thank you, Mr. Dahl, for answering, clarifying why it is you've seen so many publications of this. We were very limited in what we could provide for you in those publications. And for what it's worth, I've actually spoken to our legislators already if we might just look at these laws, that it makes it possible for us to be better at educating the public about what this kind of thing is. I wanted to point out, one of the things that so many people have been concerned about was I've had residents calling and saying they were concerned that Excel Energy was going away, because the publication lists it as Public Service Company of Colorado. So I wanted to clarify that for all intents and purposes of this, and for our concern as residents, there is no difference between Public Service Company of Colorado and Excel Energy. They, Excel Energy purchased Public Service Company of Colorado. So not to worry, there's not going to be any major changes in who you get your bills from or anything like that. I think that clarifies everything. And again, this is going to be a ballot issue, so there's a lot more time for which we're going to be talking about this, and we hope to be able to get more information out to the community about what this franchise entails and what it means to us to vote for it. So that's it.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. The motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 23-2009, an ordinance approving a gas and electric utility franchise with Public Service Company of Colorado. Such franchise condition on voter approval of the same on second reading and that take effect upon approval by a vote of the registered electors of the city at the November 3rd, 2009, regular municipal election.
Second. The motion for approval is seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Berry voting no.
We're going to move on to item number three. It's Council Bill 19-2009. Councilmember Berry, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Yeah, I just have to scroll to it now that we're. Be great if we could have it bookmarked.
I'm glad the technology's made things so much easier to appear.
Council Bill.
Can you use the mic?
Sorry. Then I'll scroll down. Council Bill 19-2009, ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning residential development standards, case number ZOA0902. Residential development standards are primarily set in Sections 26-205 through Sections 26-214 of Chapter 26. These standards include building setbacks size and height, as well as minimum lot sizes for different land uses. This code amendment was identified as a high priority item as part of the short-term zoning code amendment staff has been working on for a number of reasons, as expressed in the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. The attached ordinance proposes various changes throughout residential zone districts. The following general changes are proposed: clarifying accessory buildings as major versus minor, and adding a new accessory building section. The current code only regulates detached garages and storage sheds for accessory buildings, allowing accessory buildings to encroach into front and street setbacks where the existing principal building already encroaches. In most zone districts, reducing the front setback from 30 feet to 25 feet, and most districts reducing side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings, so they are treated similar to the principal building. Planning Commission reviewed this code amendment at a public hearing held on June 18th, 2009, and gave a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Council Bill 19-2009 will be assigned ordinance 1448.
Thank you. Moving on to staff presentation.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. As Councilperson Berry indicated, the residential development standards are primarily set forth in various chapters of, or various sections of Chapters 26, basically 26-205 to 26-214 of the Code of Laws, and they do regulate things like building setbacks size, height, and so on. This is one of the high priority recommendations from the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy that we have been working on for the past year, a series of code amendments to implement some of those recommendations. Why is this a high priority in the NRS? Well, there's a couple of reasons. First of all, Wheat Ridge has smaller homes on average than surrounding jurisdictions, yet we have more restrictive development standards in certain cases, which makes it difficult then for those property owners to make improvements and property investment. Structural additions and construction of accessory buildings oftentimes are restricted, again, based on the development standards in the particular zone district, and we have a lot of nonconformities that are difficult to deal with as well. Of the eight jurisdictions that we canvassed, looking at the Front Range communities and their development standards, we came away with that Wheat Ridge has the largest front setback requirements, that we have lesser rear setbacks for main structures than most communities, that we have larger side and rear setbacks for accessory structures, and finally, larger setbacks for corner lots. In the existing zoning code, there are definitely some challenges in administering the current codes regarding the consistency and treatment of principal structures versus accessory structures. And in many cases, based on a 2003 code amendment that was done, the principal structure has a smaller setback than the accessory structure, which makes no sense, because then you end up with the accessory structure having a greater setback, whereas the primary structure could be 35 feet tall and only five feet from the property line. So there's that difference that has been hard to administer. A lot of folks have applied for variances based on that, those code amendments passed in 2003. The required front and side street setbacks for corner lots, again, creates a very small buildable area for these properties. We require 30-foot setbacks on corner lots from both the side street and the front street, again, resulting in citizens having to come in and apply for variances, which is an expense, and it takes a while to go through as well. The only two accessory buildings we are recognized in the zoning code are garages and storage sheds, and of course, we've got a whole variety of different types of structures such as barns and cupolos and pergolas. And where do those fit within, we have to end up having to shoehorn those non-addressed accessory buildings into some sort of category. So the intent of the attached ordinance is to provide more consistency and flexibility in the treatment of principal versus accessory buildings, provides some modest front setback reductions to better encourage pedestrian-friendly development pattern, and to address accessory structures and non-conforming structures. So just as an overview, and I would comment that, you know, we went through a fairly laborious process with this. We met with Planning Commission several times during study session. We met with city council in study session, trying to hash this all out. We also brought Board of Adjustments in, because they, of course, are the entity that grants variances. And so just to get the input from all the different folks as we've gone through this process. So what we've done, and what the ordinance you've got in front of you tonight does, is first of all, it reduces the front setback from 30 feet to 25 feet in most of the zone districts. That does exclude R1, which is our largest lot, and so that would remain the same. In R1C, which is our smallest single-family zone district, it's gone from 30 feet to 20 feet, and we feel that's appropriate based on 50-foot lot would be in the minimum for that zone district. We've reduced the side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings, so they're treated similar to principal structures. We've classified accessory buildings as major versus minor, so that it fits other types of structures into a specific area that we can act on. And then we've allowed some setback encroachments for accessory buildings where the principal building already encroaches, and we see a lot of that over in the eastern side of Wheat Ridge. This next example is one that's taken from the R2, just to illustrate the disparity between the setbacks for the primary structure and the accessory structure. At the front of the property, you can see that these larger structures indicate the primary structure, which would typically be a house, and they only have to be five feet away from the property line. In the rear, these buildings represent perhaps garages, and per the 2003 zoning code amendment series that was passed, they have to have 10-foot setbacks. So like I say, the smaller accessory structure has to be farther away from that common property line than the main house does, and that's been hard to administer and explain to people. As recommended by Planning Commission, staff proposes classifying accessory structures into major and minor than currently, the way we do it, which is basically garages and sheds. The major accessory buildings, which would include structures such as barns and, again, detached garages, would have the same site and size and height restrictions as detached garages currently do. And similarly, minor accessory structures, which are typically sheds, have, or, but they could also be greenhouses or gazebos, have size restrictions similar to what we've got right now with the storage sheds. Under the proposed regulation, the size of the structure is the determining factor in its classification regardless of the use. And I would note that the setbacks for the major accessory buildings are larger than those required for the minor accessory structures. Here are a couple examples we put together, looking at some of the setbacks, and these, let's see, one's over in District 1, and the other one would be District 2, showing what the red is supposed to show is that minimum front setback of 30 feet all the way around, and as you can see, that there, and these are actually taken from aerial photos, that there are lots of encroachments into that required setback. And the interesting thing is that you can build in line if you're adding onto your house, but you can't build a detached garage and follow that same line. So that is one of the changes that we have recommended, is to allow a little bit more flexibility in applying those situations for nonconforming structures. We did specifically take a look at detached garages, just because there is the issue of, for example, the different types of situation where you might have the house that's right up against the street and allowing the garage to be built in line with that. But what we don't want to see is a garage with a substandard setback, so that a car, there's the false conception that a car will fit in a driveway, and it will end up sticking into the street. So essentially, they can build in line at five feet or closer, or it has to be 18 feet back, and that's to accommodate a car to get into that driveway, not stick over into the driveway. So Planning Commission did review this at public hearing on June 18th. They did recommend approval without any changes to the content, and there were no speakers in the audience. Staff, of course, is giving a recommendation of approval as we proposed it, and questions at this time would be appropriate.
We'll move on to public comment.
Okay.
Do we have anybody from the public to speak on item number three? Please step forward.
Louise Turner, T U R N E R, Wheat Ridge. You know, Wheat Ridge has always been known as a beautiful community, a place that was a pleasant place to live, a place that had high quality of life. And one of the things that has ensured that over the years is the setbacks for the primary structures. We don't have masses of houses right up against the street. We don't have them packed together like you can find in many, many communities around us. We've had that little bit of privacy that goes with quality of life, and it's made the community a very pleasant, nice community. We've also had a zoning law that has protected that, at least it did for a long time. Now, I'm speaking to the primary structure, the houses. I think we have done some very goofy things when we changed the setbacks for minor storage buildings and those kinds of things, and some of those obviously do need to be changed. But to make the houses go out toward the street farther, or to allow the one next door, if you think in terms of your own house, do you want somebody next door to you building way out to the front, right up against your property line, or very close to your property line? Why in the world would we need to reduce our front yard setback for houses down less than what it is, what has been the standard, and where everybody else's is within a community area? There's something about compatibility that all of a sudden, since this push to make people make their houses bigger and taller, and everything to be bigger, suddenly you can drive through Wheat Ridge and you can find houses where, all of a sudden, there's one that's totally incompatible with its neighborhood. Compatibility is something that's important. Setbacks are important. And you go through the number of setback variances that have been given. Every time there is a setback variance, the quality of life goes down in that particular For a great many years, the only body that could give a variance to the laws of the city was the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment was limited to a 10% variance. Basically, people followed the community standards, and it made for a very nice community. All of a sudden, the Board of Adjustment is not the only one that can give a variance, and there are no limits on the variances. It can be 100%. Now we have the Board of Adjustment, which does give notices and so forth. We also have, the city council can give variances. We also have the Planning Commission can give variances. And a number of years ago, it became possible for the staff to give 10% variances. Then this council increased the staff variances to 50%, and all of a sudden, things are drastically changed. The staff should be supporting the laws of the city, not making variances. The city council approves the things that come to it, but should not be making the variances. They should be reserved back to the Board of Adjustment and kept there. We have a very extensive zoning law, as you know, if you ever tried to look anything up in it. It used to be very simple. Now it's 200 pages, but all of the things that made protection for you and me as a homeowner within our own neighborhoods, all of those protections have been taken away by changes in the zoning law. away by changes in the zoning law, so that we no longer have them. As I said, every time a setback variance is given, somebody's quality of life goes down. I would like to see you at least take the main structures out of this law, and not get them back to where the houses start getting closer and closer to the street. As I said, the staff can already give a 50% variance to any part of this law, and shouldn't. That's one of the changes that should be absolutely reserved back to the Board of Adjustment, not be done by the staff. But that is in the law, and they're allowed to do it. Do you want to start with a 25-foot setback and go 50% from that? Your side yard setbacks have all been varied over time. Every time the zoning law is changed or rewritten, and the last two times that it's been rewritten, the whole law was done at one time. So, very few people had any idea exactly what it said. But at any rate, I'm asking you to not reduce further the setbacks for primary structures on a property. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else to speak in our public comment? We'll move on to council questions and discussion before I close the public hearing. Mr. Gokee?
What is the amount of administrative percentage that you can allow a variance for administratively? And that's on all of these features?
Yes.
Keep in mind, there are specific criteria that we use to evaluate variances. We do a posting and a publishing to allow the adjacent property owners for input. So, we do have specific criteria and rules that we have to follow when working with those applications.
I'm just curious how I missed that. I apologize as a public. I missed it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Gokee?
No.
Mr. Stites?
Just a quick question, Meredith. And I know you haven't seen the house or anything like that. But I had a gentleman talk to me that would like to put a carport on the side of his house, and he has to have, I think it's 15 feet from the property line. Will this help him at all build that?
Probably not. It sounds like he's probably got R1 zoning, and really, R1 is our large lot, largest lot, single family. We really have proposed no changes, just because of some of the issues that Mrs. Turner brought up.
If he was R2, would that help?
Um, if it's attached to the house, no, it would not. If it were detached, it would help.
Okay.
If he were a corner lot, and he wanted to build a carport, it would help.
Okay, okay. Anybody else before I go to Mr. Gokee? Mr. Gokee?
Yeah, I was just glancing through here. In the R2, Meredith, you're allowed to have a major structure, your major unattached structure be 1,000 square feet?
Detached structures can go up to 1,000 square feet.
Yeah. And in the R2, R2A, that dropped to 600. Why is that?
The R2A lots are smaller typically than an R2 lot, and that's why there is a corresponding reduction in the amount of accessory structure space you can have.
And that's, so what you're saying is that people have less, I mean, that's barely, that's what I call a motorcycle garage. It's about as tall as big for as to put a motorcycle in. So, I mean, that's what they buy. That's what they get.
We don't have a whole lot of R2A zoning. We have a couple pockets of it, but not very much.
Yeah, wasn't there a mass rezoning a few years ago where they took some of the R2 and downsized all of them and then done a mass rezoning like that?
It was R3.
It was R3.
Pardon?
R3. It was R3. We did rezon things to R1C and R2, where the lot sizes worked.
Any other questions, Mr. Gokee?
No, that's all.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to adopt Council Bill 19-2009, case number Z O A O 9 O 2, ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning residential development standards on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
For a second?
Second.
The motion for approval, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Dean, we're waiting for your vote still. Thanks. Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Wambel and Gokee voting no.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest if anyone's here for number four, and if they aren't, maybe we could move it to an agenda item where people are waiting on.
Oh, sure.
Since they've been here so long.
Is anybody here for item four? So, by unanimous consent, we'll just move on to, which one did you want to move on to? Item seven?
I think it's item seven, yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to item seven, which is Council Bill 24-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Gokee, item number seven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 24-2009, inordinate submitting two ballot questions to the voters of the city at the November 3, 2009, regular municipal election, to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to exempt certain areas of the city from the height and residential density limitations of the Charter 5.10.1.
For the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
Sorry, my papers are a little messed up, too, here. Okay. Council Bill 24-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1452.
Just to confirm, we are on item number seven, and we'll go to a staff presentation. Mr. Dahl?
Council has seen this in study session, first reading. This proposes two separate additional subsections to Charter Section 510.1, which is the Building Height and Density Limitation section of the Charter. And these two new subsections, if adopted, would exempt or exclude from the Charter Height and Density requirements two areas of the city. The first area for ballot question one would be the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan area, excluding certain areas from there. And we can get a map if you like, but it would exclude along Kipling, south of 44th, properties, and east of I-70, north of 32nd, west of Ward Road, and south of 44th Avenue and Ward Road. But that would be the first area. The ordinance goes on to set the actual text of what that Charter amendment would read, and the ballot title. All of them read very similar. The ballot title's a little shorter. The second proposed change in Section 2 would be to do exactly the same thing, but with respect to the Wheat Ridge Town Center Urban Renewal Project area, as described in the Urban Renewal Plan. The both amendments specify that it does not modify any current zoning, preserves the height and density limitations which we have in the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, and stresses that those would have to be changed only by the City Council, by ordinance, as the City Council does now change various provisions in the Code of Laws, similar to the ordinance that you just passed. That's what the two portions of this ordinance do. Be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Goff, does it include two areas on Wadsworth?
Second area includes the town center and also the Wadsworth Boulevard, urban renewal area.
Sorry. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward if you have any comments on item number seven, and spell your last name for the record, and give us your street or city.
Hello again. I'm John McMillan, emceed in ILLIN, 9801 West 38th Avenue. And this time, I'll be careful just to speak as a nine-year resident of the city of Wheat Ridge. I've defended the Charter's height and density controls because I believe they're firm limits we've depended upon. I think they're reasonable and not at all unusual. From the research I've done, all of the city of Boulder fits under a 55-foot height limit, which is only five feet shorter than ours. And it certainly hasn't kept the developers out of Boulder. But I appreciate the spirit of compromise that's reflected in this new approach, to make these changes in a few selected areas, not citywide, like you tried last time. I don't intend the Charter's limits to choke off our city's development and evolution. Therefore, I'm neutral on the Wadsworth Corridor Charter change at this time. If we can create a positive view development by stretching our current limits, there's no better place to do it than there, the busiest place in town. But I'm opposed to removing Charter Height and Density Limits from the I-70 corridor. This area may look remote and distant on a flat map, but it sits smack in the middle of our mountain views. For those of us who enjoy a view off the Clear Creek Bluffs out towards the Flatirons and Front Range, tall buildings on I-70 could spoil that view. The same is true for the new park site at West 38th and Kipling. This park has one of the best mountain views anywhere. The view from this public place deserves formal protection in the form of a view plane ordinance. Denver has several of these, preserving mountain views from popular public places such as the State Capitol or Coors Field. I don't see developers in this economy rushing to build any tall buildings along the I-70 frontage soon. But this area also includes a future light rail stop at Ward Road. If you can see the red and white broadcasting tower up there from your homes, you're looking at what I'm talking about. Imagine that tower becoming a large, solid office building. When light rail comes, it will be pressured to develop this along the lines of TOD, Transit Oriented Development. That's appropriate, but not if it becomes tall, ostentatious development. Wheat Ridge residents have enjoyed mountain views since before this was a city. It would be tragic to block these views to create an urban center that we've never had and some of us never desired. In a recent study session, Councilman Gokee made the wise point that tall buildings have effects that extend far beyond their sights. That's the main reason why I'm concerned about keeping our height limits strong and effective. Personally, I can see the merits of greater residential and commercial density, if it's done properly, not just in scattered small projects that don't add up to anything. I would love to see us redevelop 38th and Wadsworth into a pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use attraction to serve the workforce to the hospital. If you need a little more height and density, do that, fine. But I speak to make the point that although the I-70 corridor is the foreground of our mountain view, and those views deserve the protection of Charter limits, until and unless we can put in proper view plane corridors that will serve that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have some coffee, Terry? You have some coffee for the late night?
No. My name's Terry Amalfitano, last name A M A L F I T A N O. I live at 3736 Mead Street, Denver, Colorado. I own a business in Wheat Ridge at 7300 West 38th Avenue. I wanted to begin by apologizing about my attire, that I wasn't dressed very seriously. In retrospect, maybe I should have worn my pajamas. But my attire is not a reflection on the company or the seriousness of this subject matter. I believe that we can all agree that there's very little regarding the current business climate that is not serious. I would like to offer my opinion to council, and it might be too late for this, but that the exclusion of 38th Avenue from the proposed height and density changes is a step in the wrong direction. We all have limited resources that we're trying to operate on. We need to work together to try to generate revenue. And we will need every advantage possible, I believe, if we are going to come out of this downturn intact. I think we should do everything in our power to make our languishing commercial properties more attractive to investors, and there are a lot of them along that area. Truly ill-planned or ill-fitting projects can be stopped by other existing avenues that are already open to the city. In these changing times, the value in the city's commercial properties lies in their versatility, I believe. And I'm not necessarily envisioning, like, huge tall buildings along 38th Avenue. But I do believe that the density of the development near 38th and Tennyson was achieved very nicely. And we could have that same thing. We should remove every obstacle we can. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm John Marriott, M A R R I O T T. I live at 5595 Carr Street in Arvada, and I own Larson Ski &amp; Sport at 4715 Kipling Street. I'm also speaking to you today as the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District. Well, I can appreciate what Mr. McMillan had to say about preserving the height and density within the Charter. I believe it's very much a big impediment to some necessary development. My particular business is within the urban renewal area on the Kipling Corridor. And I view this, being able to remove this via these ordinances, as a huge positive, not a negative. Additionally, I would also like to advocate that the 38th Avenue Urban Renewal Zone also be added to this. I believe there's really no logical reason to keep that out. There's plenty of public input within the rezoning, or within the process to allow for heightened density questions. In fact, it's really the only way the public can be involved in heightened density questions is if it's out of the Charter and within the zoning code. So, I would like to advocate for passing of these ordinances, to put this on the ballot, and as well, encourage you to reconsider and place the 38th Avenue Urban Renewal Zone in this as well.
Thank you.
I'm Craig Graham, G R A H A M. And I live at 3520 Owen Street. And one of the reasons I bought over there is my views. And if you start raising these buildings, and that the gentleman suggested that I-70 corridor, I will be able to see all of that then. And that might make me want to move out of this place. But I bought because of the views. And I know I have some neighbors that just moved in because of the views. So, we can either get rid of the people that are living here for the views, or build the buildings. So, I'm against it.
Do we have any other comments?
Louise Turner, Wheat Ridge. I guess, excuse me, anybody that doesn't know that you're going to pass this simply hasn't been paying attention over the past several years. At least this time, you're admitting to what you're doing. The last time around was a little bit devious, as you know. This was originally petitioned onto the ballot by the citizens, which is not a simple matter like it is for you people. You want to put something on the ballot, you pass an ordinance, and it's on the ballot. When citizens do it, they work their tails off, letting people know, et cetera, et cetera. This was what happened in this event, and it was a long time ago. I think it's interesting that you include the height for businesses, because we've allowed 50-feet height for businesses now forever. And has there ever been anybody asked to do something higher than that? And how many 50-foot business buildings do we have? How many do you know of? Are there more than three or four in the entire city? It hasn't been a real hot item. But anyway, obviously, we'll go to the voters again, and we'll see what happens. I hope you clarify the description of the boundaries. It's a little mind-boggling to try to read through that and figure out exactly what you're talking about. Your statement is clear that you want to get rid of the heightened density limits. That part is perfectly evident. But you might take a second look at the way the boundaries are described and see if there is a better way to make that a little bit more clear. Thank you.
We'll move on to council questions and discussion. Mr. Wambel?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we've worked on this long and hard. And we finally did come up with a compromise that I think is a great place to start with this. The one thing I will say, Tennyson Street and 32nd, especially Tennyson Street in the Art District that it has currently, does not go above 50 feet. I do not want to see high rises on West 38th. I do not want to see that business over there change like that. I think if you were to talk to a lot of the residents, they do not either. I think what they want to see is something more comparable to West 32nd Street and Tennyson Street. And we currently allow for that height. Street, and we currently allow for that height.
Any other comments from council?
Well, the real issue is mixed use. When we have a mixture of residential and commercial, which is what happens in most of the areas in Highlands, along Tennyson, and in Belmar, we end up having a 35-foot height restriction, and it's very difficult to do mixed-use development with the 35-foot height. I think that's one of our most limiting factors. 38th Avenue is our main street. If it weren't our main street, why do we have the parade there? Why have we invested so much? We put so much in public infrastructure to increase 38th Avenue. It makes no sense to me not to include it. It's an area closest to Highlands where we have, I think, a great potential for spillover from there, and we've already invested so much. It is our heart, it is our main street, it's listed that way in the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, which we've adopted. It's also being listed as mixed use in the draft plan of the Comprehensive Plan. It just doesn't make any sense to me not to be able to put 38th Avenue in and include that. It's going to be separate ballot issues, people can vote it up or down. It doesn't make any sense not to put that in front of the voters.
Do we have any other comments before I close the public hearing? I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 21, 2009, and ordinance amending Section 26-501 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning Austin...
Wait, wait. Holy moly. Whoa. We're on item number seven, Mr. Goke?
I'll jump back to item number seven now. Thank you.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 24, 2009, and ordinance submitting two ballot questions to the voters at the city in the November 3, 2009 Regular Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to exempt certain areas of the city from the height and residential density limitations of Charter Section 5.10.1 on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption on second reading.
Second.
Second. We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites and Sang.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend the ordinance as follow. Amend the title of the ordinance to read. Title and ordinance submitting, strike two, insert three, ballot questions to the voters of the City of Wheat Ridge at the November 3, 2009 Regular Municipal Election to amend the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to exempt certain areas of the city from heightened residential density limitations of Charter Section 5.10.1. Amend the second areas clause of the ordinance to read, whereas this council wishes to, strike two, insert three ballot questions amending the charter to exempt, strike two, insert three, areas of the city from the charter limitations upon building height and residential density, and add a new section three to the ordinance to read. And just to comment, this is the exact same thing that's in the ordinance now, except it just puts in 38th Avenue. Add new section three to the ordinance to read. Section three ballot question referred in ballot title set, the following ballot question is hereby referred to the electorate of the city at the November 3, 2009 Regular Municipal Election. Shall section 5.10.1 of the Home Rule Charter of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado be amended by the addition of new subsection H, exempting the following areas of the city from the limitations of that section upon building height and residential density that area described in West 38th Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan adopted October 22, 2001, excluding therefrom all properties in the planned area along 38th Avenue, west of Sheridan Boulevard, and east of Wadsworth Boulevard, without modifying any current zoning on any property and preserving existing height and density limitations in the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws unless and until modified through future ordinances approved by the city after public hearings. Both texted the amendment, amend section 5.10.1 of the Charter to add a new subsection F to read as follows. 5.10.1 Building Height and Density Limitations, notwithstanding any other provisions of this section, the limitations upon building height and residential density contained herein shall not apply within areas of the city that are described in the West 38th Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan adopted October 22, 2001, excluding therefrom all properties in the planned area along 38th Avenue, west of Sheridan Boulevard, and east of Wadsworth Boulevard, without modifying any current zoning on any property and preserving existing height and density limitations in the future Wheat Ridge Code of Laws unless and until modified through future ordinances approved by City Council after public hearings. Ballot title, amend section 5.10.1 of the Wheat Ridge Home Rule Charter to exempt certain areas of the city from the limitations upon building height and residential density contained in Charter Section 5.10.1, without modifying any current zoning on any property and preserving existing height and density limitations in the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws unless and until such and modified through future ordinances approved by City Council after public hearings. Renumber the remaining sections of the ordinance. This was reviewed by Mr. Dahl and approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to amend to add 38th Avenue, I believe, from Sheridan to Wadsworth as a third ballot question, and also exclude the heightened density, Mr. Dahl, and was seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Mr. Dahl?
In hearing the reading, I'm wondering if the words east and west are, need to be switched. And maybe I'm wrong, but the text read, excluding areas west of Sheridan and east of Wadsworth. Should it be the reverse?
But if that's excluding from the height and density limitations.
Well, no, excluding the properties in the planned area which are west of Sheridan and east of Wadsworth. I'm assuming you would not want to exclude... Maybe I'm wrong. Well, yeah, if you want to keep it consistent with the other questions, you just need to refer to the 38th Avenue. Yeah, let's recall that.
Yeah, that's fine.
What we're describing, what we're describing is an area that's to be excluded, that's where the charter limitations will not apply.
Okay.
The planned area, except for, says the phrase, item, or areas west of Sheridan and east of Wadsworth, and I assume...
That's fine.
That's the very area you want to be, I think, so...
It's fine.
All right.
First, you don't need to say anything about east of Sheridan.
Because that would be out of the city. Or west of Wadsworth, either just refer to the 38th Avenue.
Correct.
Plan. Okay. Because that area stops at Wadsworth, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then maybe, probably don't need the exclusion language, I think, in either any of those places.
Does that sit with a second, those changes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sang?
Well, again, something's been brought in to us that I have not seen before, or even anyone talked to me about. I will not be supporting this amendment because that's not what we discussed, and all came to the conclusion that needed to go on the ballot, so I'll be voting no.
Mr. Wamboldt?
I will adamantly be voting no on this. There is nothing that has been done in Northwest Denver on Tennyson or on 32nd that could not be done with 38th Avenue as it exists currently within the code. I guess the one other thing I'd like to say is drafting ordinances on the dais, as well as coming up last minute, not attending the meeting that it was discussed in, and then deciding that you are going to go ahead and change the opinion, and then also getting outside groups to influence business owners to come in and speak. I have a real hard time with that, and I will definitely not be supporting this ordinance. I might not support the whole thing now. And I know my constituents that I've been saying, hey, this is a great compromise. Maybe I got to go back to them and say, this isn't... Look, here they go.
Any other comments? Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did discuss this in length at a study session. I believe Mrs. Berry was lobbying in DC for us at that time for some funding, and missed that study session. I'm not correct. Is that correct?
Yes, I was speaking to our congressional delegation about transportation funding dollars, and I might add, I went at my own expense. Mr. Wamboldt?
Okay, so...
Let's keep it for the ballot question, please.
As far as speaking to the ballot question, I remember at that study session, I was uncomfortable because I really felt we should go again to let the community know that we wanted to go for the entire urban renewal area. So it was a compromise on my part when I voted in favor of this. I appreciate it bringing forward to the community that they will now have three options. It's up to the voters. The voters, hopefully, will make it as clear as we possibly can what they're voting on, and I think it's a fair compromise, so I appreciate it being brought forward. And I also did not have this data until this moment, but I can think on my feet. I'm good.
Any other comments before we vote on this amendment? So the amendment right now is to add a third ballot question for 38th Avenue from Sheridan, between, well, 38th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan, basically between Sheridan and Wadsworth, to add that as a third ballot question and to exempt that area from the building height and density. So discussion on that before we... Ms. Langworthy?
I guess, I'm hearing, again, I just got this information this evening here on the dais as well, and I also missed that meeting, but I was in vacation, a much-deserved one for myself, so I wasn't there to participate, so I can't really begrudge what was brought before us because I wasn't able to attend. The thing is, is 38th Avenue is a vital part of our community, and we want it to be the best-looking part of our community, as well as our other quarters, and if other people... I guess I think we should allow the citizens to at least make that decision. If they choose to vote at no, then they choose to vote at no. But kind of like the prior plan development thing, I would prefer them to have that option than to make that option, you know, to make that decision for them. And if they, again, if they say no, then they say no, but...
Mr. Goke?
Yeah, I really don't know how I can correlate 38th Avenue any other way than I eliminated part of Kipling just for the same fact that I didn't support 38th Avenue. It's how impactful it is to the neighborhood. And so for that reason, I didn't, I didn't think while reaching compromise with my counselors, fellow counselors and stuff, that that was a viable concern. As a matter of fact, I don't think the subject of 38th Avenue came up at that meeting at all. Wasn't even alternative at that time. You know, I think there's a lot of distrust about council, and you have to earn that trust somehow with the public. You've got to go back to them, you've got to say, give us an opportunity to show you we can use the best possible judgment in what we have to do, what we have to provide for future development in this community. I selected what I thought to be the prime areas, providing the least amount of residential impact to this community. To add this in surely blows that out of the water, and would blow the trust out of the water of those people that showed me support to at least bring this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Here we go. The most pressing thing we have right now, to me, is up north. That is absolutely the must area right now. We've got to get ready for that TOD up there, the mass transit, train, whatever. We cannot do it at 21 units an acre. So to me, number one concern for this city should be up north. The number two concern should be 44th and Wadsworth because that could possibly be getting ready to go as a development here pretty soon. So you're two hot areas for this city. In order for this city to grow right now are up north and then 44th and Wadsworth. Now, 38th, on the other hand, I think we have to be extremely careful with. Not that I am against redeveloping 38th Avenue, but you've got to remember 38th Avenue goes right smackdown the residential neighborhood, and that we have to be careful of, and then we also have to be careful of, we've got to get some buildings in there. We've got a lot of crap down there on 38th Avenue. We've got a lot of crap on Wadsworth, we've got a lot of crap on Kipling. But until we come up with some better plan, I think it's going to have to stay that way. But I won't support this. I can't see at this particular time having a ballot question to clog things up on 38th Avenue.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, having gone to some of the urban renewal meetings, there will be impact on residents up by the gold line, just as well as there would be impact on residents along 38th, as well as probably some on Kipling. There will be impact everywhere. I think we need to let the community come out and vote and decide what their choices are.
Ms. Berry?
I guess I find it somewhat interesting in that, in the Northwest Subarea Plan, we came right out and said we need to look at a charter change. And that makes, it makes sense in the TOD area. When we adopted the Wadsworth Subarea Plan, that was discussed, and this council, I didn't support that, but this council took out a section in that plan that said, look at a charter change for heightened density limitations. So I think this council made somewhat of a promise to that community, or a guarantee to that community, that you were going to go look at that at 44th and Wadsworth. There are a lot of comments made about how, you know, we would let the market take its place there. We didn't make those, we don't have any of those restrictions or make any of those promises along 38th and Wadsworth. If you look at the Urban Renewal Plan and the other plans that we've adopted, this makes sense. I think just a few years ago, again, for this to be just a part section of 44th and Wadsworth, after we adopted the Subarea Plan and struck that language specifically, I think if you're talking about trust with the community, that's a big trust issue. I think 38th Avenue, again, everything we invested in infrastructure there, millions of dollars. Part of what happens with this council is that we flip from one thing to another. We started on 38th Avenue, we put a lot of money into infrastructure, and then we didn't adopt any plans that helped support that. Public infrastructure is only one of the first items to make successful redevelopment or revitalization. You need to have the land use plans in place that support that, and we didn't do that. And then we came back in with the NRS, and that helped started to address that, and we've tried to address it through some of the urban renewal. We need to finish. We start something, we start flitting around to different areas of the city, we need to finish. We've invested very much in our main street, it is our main street. We need to give it all the tools it can to finish that project, not to waste all the money we've put in infrastructure and all we've put in planning. We need to do that. And with all due respect, we cannot do a three-story residential or a three-story mixed-use with the limitations that we have now, and that's exactly what you find in other areas adjacent to us, which are much more successful and are much more community gathering centers.
Mr. Wamboldt?
I'd like to call for the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please pull the council and call for the question, take six votes to pass, or more.
Clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
What are we voting on?
Call for the question, just to vote on the amendment. We're voting, there's a call for a question to vote on, Council...
Board? We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting, well, we're calling for the question to vote on the amendment, so this has to pass by six votes to call for the question, and then we'll vote on the amendment if it passes.
Who is that seconded by?
Councilmember Sang. Mr. Wamboldt, call for the question.
It's almost 11 o'clock.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Goke voting no.
Okay, based on that, we have to vote on the amendment, so please pull the council on Councilmember Berry's amendment for 38th Avenue.
I have to, too.
We're voting on the amendment right now.
Motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, and Councilmember Stites saying Wamboldt and Goke voting no.
And I guess, before I vote on this, I'm going to have to make a few comments, because I would have to agree with Councilmember Berry that a lot of things have not taken place and not been completed. And one of the biggest things that I've been asking for as mayor for the last three years is a mixed-use zone district to address all of these different, a clean mixed-use zone district that actually worked for the betterment of the Wadsworth... district that actually worked for the betterment of the Wadsworth corridor and the 38th Avenue corridor. That hasn't happened. My focus as mayor the last three, four years has been 44th and Wadsworth and talking to the business owners in that area and also those residents in that area. That's an area where people do want to see development and talking with Wheat Ridge 2020 and also the business community. The problem of 44th and Wadsworth right now to make that project profitable and to work is height and density. So my concern has been Wadsworth Boulevard, both sides of Wadsworth Boulevard, east and west side. And I also agree that the Cabela's site and the sites that we were talking about earlier are very important for the city to have height and density restrictions removed. With that being said, that ship's already left the port, and I think right now with 38th Avenue, what I've heard is that the folks who would normally oppose all of these types of changes said, "Okay, the compromise is, we're going to keep it at I-70 and Kipling corridor and Wadsworth corridor." And those two areas probably encompass 70 to 80 percent of our commercial property. And the one compromise we did have is we stopped at 44th Avenue, and it didn't go any farther south, so we wouldn't impact those residents to the south, which would take care of that area, which is near the new park. So I think 38th Avenue is a viable area, but I think right now it's going to be a problem of saying at the last minute, "We got three ballot questions, and by the way, pick one." I would rather just see the two go for it, and they have the best chance to pass, so I got to vote no on the amendment. So now we're back to the main amendment, our main motion as read from the packet by Mr. Gokhi.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to divide the question.
Okay. So we're going to divide the question, Mr. Dahl, that would be voting on each ballot question separately?
Well, what you have is an ordinance-
Right.
-in front of you, and so to be able to do that, you, let me think how you'd do that.
You really can't because it's not two items.
It's an ordinance, is the problem. You could certainly move to, trying to think how you could move to amend the ordinance to make this into two questions, but it's an ordinance. You can move to amend the ordinance to add, you could move to amend the ordinance to delete, but I don't think you can say, "Let's vote twice on different pieces of an ordinance." I just, you know, you, that's not, I just believe it's not available. There's some questions you can divide, but here you have an ordinance, and I can't see a proper, true way to do that.
Okay, well, I think it was like having each separately for each issue, but I'll just, I'll just make a motion to strike the 44th and Wadsworth section.
It's a proper motion.
Is there a second to strike 44th and Wadsworth?
Second.
Okay, clear the board, please, because I see that there's already people been voting on something else there, so, Mr., could you clear?
Clear.
So now the amendment is to strike the 44th and Wadsworth location, which makes no sense to me, but go ahead and vote, please.
Motion fails six to two with Councilmembers Berry and Adams voting yes.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion, unamended. Any more amendments? Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. So now I guess we're on to item number four. Item four is Council Bill 21-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 21-2009, an ordinance amending section 26-501 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning off-street parking surfacing requirements. Amends chapter 26, article five, subsections 26-501A and B of the Code of Laws by prohibiting the parking of vehicles on landscaping or compact dirt surfaces unless those surfaces are residential driveways. The ordinance defines residential driveway and hard surface.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 21-2009 will be assigned, ordinance 1449.
Staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and keep it relatively brief, given the hour. This is a fairly brief presentation. I want to just review and summarize the policy issue that's been identified in regards to off-street parking surfacing requirement. I'll talk a little bit about some of the previous discussions we've had at City Council at a study session level, and then go through the proposed ordinance and entertain questions. The issue that's been identified is really, in my mind, to define a community standard for what are appropriate surfaces to park vehicles on in residential districts. Some of the specific issues that have been identified are that there are too many vehicles being parked on lawns or on dirt surfaces, that there's a real impact on streets from the dirt that gets tracked out into the streets, and it's a stormwater quality management issue, and the aesthetic issues that have the potential for impact on property values of just how it looks to park on those certain unimproved surfaces. The challenge that we have is that the existing language in section 26-501 off-street parking specifically only applies to new development or substantial changes in use or substantial expansion. So while we have a parking surfacing requirement in the code right now, it's not enforceable on anything other than new development. I'm going to go through a few slides, and you've seen these before, but they just start to tell the story of what we're trying to promote as an acceptable surface, but starting with what we think are inappropriate surfaces. Example of vehicle parked on weeds, example of a vehicle parked on a lawn area, this would be, would meet the definition of landscaping in the existing code, and we're proposing that you cannot park on landscaped areas. Here's an example of a dirt surface. Two examples here, really, there's not a vehicle parked on the dirt surface to the right of the car, but that would not be an acceptable surface in the proposed ordinance. And then also a trailer that's parked in a lawn area to the right. Another example of a vehicle that's just parked, you know, off the driveway in a lawn Some sort of a trailer, again, parked in a front lawn area. Does not appear to be an operable vehicle, but again, either parked on a compacted dirt surface or a lawn area, either way, it would not be allowed in the ordinance that's been proposed. And then a few examples of what we believe generally would be acceptable surfaces. This is a typical concrete driveway, compacted crushed stone, a brick paver material, more compacted gravel, along with an asphalt surface, and more compacted crushed stone. So at previous city council meetings in April and more recently in July, the direction that we received from you in terms of drafting this legislation was that we want to define a standard whereby there's no parking in residential front yards on certain unimproved surfaces. That would include grass, it would include compacted dirt, and that we want to do that in the short term. So we want to propose a code amendment whereby we can enforce that standard moving forward, not just to new development, but to existing development. So the proposed ordinance, four slides just outlining what the ordinance would achieve. Effective August 31, 2009, makes it unlawful to park vehicles in residential districts on the following surfaces: landscaping, as currently defined, that's in section 26-502 of the code, weeds, and compacted dirt. And we note there with the exception of existing driveways, and I'll talk about that next. We want to define residential driveways, which is a term that is not currently defined in the code. We're defining them to be a surface that's generally allowed to not be greater than two feet wider than the garage door on both sides. By defining driveways, what we're doing is that we're allowing existing driveways that may be used for parking and that do not meet the new surfacing standards that we're defining to continue without forcing those areas to meet the new surfacing standards. Why we're proposing to do that is just a feeling at a staff level that it would be onerous to require everyone to improve their existing driveway to this new standard, whereas the requirement to, you know, apply to existing development that off-street parking as, not to be confused with this definition of residential driveway, that the off-street parking areas don't have to meet that or do have to meet the new surfacing standard. So people can continue to use their residential driveways the way we've crafted the ordinance, even if they don't meet the new surfacing standard. We define hard surface, which is referenced in the code currently, but it's not defined. And this is the definition that we're trying to mirror the images that we portrayed in the slides. So compacted gravel, compacted crushed stone, recycled asphalt, open and closed pavers, and other similar materials. And lastly, allow in the future, this has been somewhat of an ambiguous area in the code, that driveway surfaces, the hard surface of the driveway, does not have to be asphalt or concrete, but can meet this new definition of hard surface, which includes compacted gravel, et cetera. We are proposing that the standard, that the connection to the street, that first 25 feet, would still need to meet the asphalt or concrete requirement and would not be allowed to be the lesser definition of hard surface, which would include the compacted gravel. So that is really it in a nutshell. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing just last Thursday on this ordinance. They, there were no public comments during the public hearing portion of the discussion. The Planning Commission did forward a recommendation of approval. The vote on that recommendation was six to one. That's the end of my presentation.
Do we have anybody here to speak on item number four?
There's a few things on this, three things, actually. You make no provision for temporary parking. I can think of so many reasons why you might have a car on your property briefly. You have kids in college, they come home for a weekend, and they park the car, and you put it on the grass, and it doesn't hurt anything because it comes back later. You have out-of-town relatives that come to visit. Any number of things for a brief period of time, and it isn't going to hurt a thing by having it parked on the grass. Once you hard-surface an area, even if it's for something temporary, it's dead. There's no more chance of it ever going back to being grass or vegetables or fruit or flowers or anything else. The one exception would be you do allow open pavers, which people have promoted for years and finally gave up because they could get no support. But we've got so much paving already that it just seems a shame for something unnecessary to add more hard surface instead of trying to keep as much as possible of what is left of the green in town. The other thing is, it's one more thing for code enforcement to be harassing people with, and we've had much too much of that for a long period of time. I hate to see one more thing added to the list of things that will fall into that category. Mr. Johnson brought up one thing that I hadn't noticed in here. I have two properties that are actually in agricultural use, the one where I live and a small farm. We have a hard-packeded gravel driveway at each of them. Are we going to have to pave the first 25 feet, or are those our existing ones exempted from that? Can we keep a gravel drive? Thank you.
Any other comments for item number four from the public? We'll move on to council questions, discussion. Ms. Berry?
I just want to make a comment. This one has been kind of frustrating for me. I think we've spent more time talking about this than we've talked about how we're going to fix our three-and-a-half-million-dollar budget deficit and other important issues. I mean, I have to agree with Mrs. Turner completely. I don't think that this is like the top of our list, and we've spent so much time talking about this. And I think some of the elements in here, this is a better compromise, but initially when we were talking about trying to make everyone repave their concrete, their driveways, this was incredibly onerous. I just think we've spent way too much time on this, and that in the future we need to be focusing on much more important things.
Any other comments before I close? Mr. Stites?
Can you answer Louise's question, will she have to pave the first 25 feet?
She won't. The agricultural exemption remains, and existing driveways are exempt from the new surfacing requirement.
Okay, so A1, A2, what, A3, I think are all exempt, so agriculture would be exempt, so, okay. And the other thing that I somewhat like about this, you put those pictures up with those trailers in somebody's front yard and stuff, and I've often had a lot of people stop by and say, say for instance, you have 10 homes on your block, you get that one guy with the trailer parked in his front yard. Now, what recourse do the other people have in the neighborhood because it looks terrible, runs it down, and this and that? And I think this gives us, and hopefully some of the neighbors in the leg up then to hopefully say you don't have a trailer parked in somebody's, or a car parked in somebody's yard for, you know, a long period of time. But I just hope this helps the rest of the neighborhood.
Mr. Gokhi and then Mr. Wambel?
Yeah, I hope Jeff Fox, where he doesn't get a hold of those pictures, he could run them on TV.
Mr. Wambel?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, one of the big reasons for this, and, you know, we try to follow things from the beginning to the end, is the simple fact that the police force was unable to enforce people parking on their lawns. I mean, trashed out vehicles, the worst possible-looking thing you could possibly have in a neighborhood, could not, was not enforceable to go take care of it, so that's why it's here.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number 21-2009, an ordinance amending section 26-501 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning off-street parking surface requirements to be approved on second reading and that it take effect on August 31, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Please pull the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Berry voting no.
Thank you. Council Bill 20-2009, I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce an ordinance adopting amendments to the 2003 International Building Code and the 2003 International Residential Code. Both are previously adopted by reference concerning building permit fees and certain reference standards. The proposed ordinance adopts amendments to the previously adopted 2003 additions of the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. The amendments would achieve two things: one, a reduction in the building permit fees applicable to several small-scale home improvement projects, and two, the elimination of the current required Appendix J, that small-scale remodeling and renovation projects require homeowner to bring other areas of the home not being worked on into compliance with all applicable codes. The intent of both of these amendments is to reduce the burden on homeowners who wish to perform home renovation and remodeling projects.
Move on to a staff presentation?
We have no further staff presentation, but we will certainly address any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to assign an ordinance under this one.
Oh, that's right.
Council Bill 20-2009 will be assigned, ordinance number 1450.
So we have an ordinance number, we had no more staff presentation. Anybody here to speak on item number five from the public? Please step forward, display your last name for the record, and your city and/or your address.
Joyce J., J. is J-A-Y, very difficult, 4435 Carr Street. And I'm only speaking because, well, as a candidate, I'm running across a lot of questions about the building department, and I wanted to clear up two items. One of the, of course, there's always complaints about the building department, but I'm very pleased that we have reduced the fees on the smaller items that will affect our homeowners. The two questions I had was, as I recall the presentation from, I believe it was Steve Thomas, I think it was, Colorado Code, and he suggested two things that I've been interested in- in and thought were valuable. One was a kind of a fast-track or Fast Friday ability that our department, our building department, would offer, so that on Fridays, people wanting to do a home, you know, improvement, and they needed a fast building permit. Have you been able to, is that going to go through, and we will be able to implement that? And the other question is, is I recall a sort of a pre-planning desk where someone with plans could come in and have a kind of a preview, so that they didn't go forward with detailed plans that then needed more remodeling, I believe Terry, she's not here now, ran into that, where there was a lot of possibilities that the building permit could, the, excuse me, the building department could offer suggestions that would help the plan go through more smoothly and point out any problems. So I want to know if any of those two items have been addressed.
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, those are, you're certainly correct. Those were two of the recommendations that came out of the recently completed assessment process, and both of which we have every intention to implement in the short term. We're in the process of filling a vacant position that will be a combination inspector and plans examiner. The intent of that is really to do just some of the things that you mentioned, to offer over-the-counter planner view consultations, so that people can get advice on permitting requirements and code requirements, and understand how we're enforcing certain codes in Wheat Ridge, and then also to offer additional over-the-counter permits. We haven't worked out the details of what those over-the-counter permits will look like. We will refine that once we get the new person on board, but certainly there'd be opportunities for something like a Fast Friday, which is a program that at least several other jurisdictions in the front range have.
Will there be a great deal of cost associated with this?
We had not, at this time, proposed any additional cost structure, simply the standard permit and plan review fees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snell, would you mind raising this app, please?
Oh, yeah.
I can't see pretty well. Thank you. I will move on to any other comments from the public before I close the public hearing, or actually council comments and questions? Thank you. Mr. Goke?
Were there any changes to Appendix B, C, and D?
No.
So those were the ones that presently exist within the 2003 IBC document?
Correct.
All right, okay. Just want to make sure that the only deletion, though, was Section J, and that was in regards to how much of your house you have under remodel would constitute bringing it up to code. Is that roughly what it was about?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before I close the public? Mr. Stites?
Well, if this passes, this is a good thing. I just wanted to, like a fence permit, $35, residential furnace boiler replacement, $40, residential air conditioning, $60, residential water heater replacement, $40, residential evaporated coolers, $40, residential hot tub and above-ground pool, $60. So if this passes, this is a start of a good thing.
Any other comments? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
It's my pleasure. I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2009, an ordinance adopting amendments to the 2003 International Building Code and the 2003 International Residential Code. Both is previously adopted by reference concerning building permit fees and certain reference standards on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Yes, I do. It's late, I know, but it's kind of an important issue. I've, I'm still kind of going around the city a lot. I've been seeing a lot of the damage, talked to a lot of people. I've been a little bit alarmed by the number of people I've met, residents, friends, some family members, who have actually had some difficulty in getting some of the repairs done, and actually some of the coverages that they're due for the repairs on their In, I guess what I'm seeing is a lot of folks having a difficult time understanding what they are actually covered for in their insurance. And I've also seen situations where residents have been pretty well misled by their insurance companies as to what they should be covered for, and sometimes told that their homes are not damaged when in fact they are. So this kind of gave me concern to realize that perhaps we have a lot of residents in the city, a lot of homeowners and property owners, that maybe aren't getting what they're due, and are ending up with some damaged homes that won't get fixed. So I wanted to encourage everybody to take the time to, if you have questions about what you're covered for, take the time to get some guidance on that. You can ask your insurance company for a second reinspection, and one of the best things to do is to get a professional estimate and an evaluation of the damage on your home, and then present that to your insurance company, because that can sometimes be the convincing argument that you are due for some repairs. And then I'd also encourage all of our residents to keep track of our citizens, and if you have neighbors that you believe maybe aren't getting what they are due in terms of those repairs, help them out, or help them find where they can get that help. I guess that's it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Stites?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. One will be a couple of motions. I move to direct the city attorney to prepare correspondence addressed to Wheat Ridge 2020 for signature by the mayor, the city manager, city attorney, requesting that the Wheat Ridge 2020 organization execute a quick claim deed reconvening the property at 7150 West 38th Avenue to the city, based upon the failure of Wheat Ridge 2020 to satisfy the original condition of the conveyance that a building permit for the development or substance of all, or substantially all, the property be issued on or before July 1, 2009.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stites, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, when we had conveyed that property to 2020, they hopefully had a big project going, and we put in there that they hadn't until, I believe it was July 1, 2009, to do it. Now that they haven't done that, I just think that that property needs to come back into the city coffers. At the time, the city's goal in transferring the property to Wheat Ridge 2020 was to have it redeveloped from its current status as a parking lot to something that would provide tax revenue to the city, as well as beautify the 38th Avenue street frontage. Because council wanted to set an expiration date for Wheat Ridge 2020, to accomplish its goals, the clause in the deed granting the city a future interest in the property provides the city with a right of reentry. So I think since they have not made a movement, done anything on that, since it was stipulated in our contract with them, I just think it is time that we got it back.
Any discussion about the main motion? Councilmember Adams?
I have no problem with dealing with this at all. I just wanted to know, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, being told that things aren't supposed to be brought forward, this was not brought forward to me prior to this evening. I have no problem with that because I can follow through with it. But would you give me a little bit of data with your expertise on procedure, that this is certainly something that would be appropriate, as would any other thing that comes to the dais prior?
Well, actually, Councilmember Berry's amendment was acceptable and legal, and this is a legal motion, too, so...
Thank you. I just, I wanted that clarified. Thank you.
I mean, council can make any motion they want within parliamentary procedure and the rules and orders of their council rules. Ms. Rotola?
What is the, what procedure do we have to do? Do we have to buy it back, or are they just going to get it back?
Well, what, the city does not have to buy it back. There was a condition that was not fulfilled, in my opinion, and city now requests politely that it be returned, because it's not an automatic right of reverter. If they, if they do not comply with that request, then the next step, and I would obviously come back to council, but the next step would be to file a quiet title action, to declare that the property, that the property is valid to the city, and no longer the Wheat Ridge 2020s. So, but in no case would we be paying money.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Ms. Sang?
I'd just like to make a comment that Mrs. Adams is correct, and you're correct. Anybody has any right to bring anything forward under parliamentary procedure, just as I feel I have a right, that if I don't agree with it, I can say that I don't agree with it. So it had nothing to do with it being parliamentary correct, it's that I didn't agree, that I didn't have enough information at the time.
Okay, we have a main motion from Mr. Stites, and Ms. Berry?
Has anyone spoken to Wheat Ridge 2020 at all about this? Any notice, any discussion?
I've talked to Wheat Ridge 2020 about it. I knew that we had the memo, and I talked to Britta Fisher and Denise Waddell.
When did you talk to them?
Last week.
And what, what was the response?
They just basically mentioned they have it under contract with AXIO, a company that's listing both properties, it's my assumption both properties, and that that's their, they're trying to get the property redeveloped. If you go by the property, it shows a sign of 11,000 square feet. That includes the small church, the 38th and High Court, plus the parking lot, my assumption, because I know that little building is not 11,000 square feet.
So if you separate the two, it will probably make the, you won't have any prop, if you separate the two, I just wonder if you make both properties really less developable, that maybe we ought to discuss this a little bit more.
I think what we're running into, if you don't mind me answering, is the fact that we got some other businesses who could use the public parking in the area. Mr. Paradi is one of them, but basically all those properties to the west have limited parking, and we can talk about this at a study session, where it goes back to '96, '95, where parking was taken from property owners because the street was widened, and some were reimbursed, and some were given parking spots. But the intent was to have all that under contract by July 1, 2009, and obviously it's not under a contract for development. There was two developers that actually tried to develop the property within 2020, previously, and they both fell short of the goal.
That I understand. It just seems like if you separate the two, that, I agree, there's probably should be some sort of a shared parking agreement for the existing building and the parking lot. But if you kind of separate the two without looking at the shared parking, and looking at all three parcels together, I just wonder if you just render essentially the church almost useless, because then they're not going to have any parking, and that maybe what we need to do here is to look at some sort of a shared parking agreement that takes into account Mr. Paradi, as well as the church, and so the building where the church is, so that we don't, you know...
I think you're right, but actually what happens is, when it comes back to the city, it actually becomes public parking for the church, and for Mr. Paradi, and for anybody to the west. So it's actually public parking for anybody who needs to use it, and I'm assuming that the church will be using it more on the weekends, plus off-street, on-street parking.
Well, I don't know that, if it comes back to here. I don't, you know, I don't know exactly what, if you separate it, what the zoning is. It just seems like, look, it's already past that date, you know? Maybe we take it to a study session, and we talk about it, and see what's the best to accommodate everyone in here, and make the best situation for that entire block.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, or we have a main motion. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, you just made mention of some history that I didn't have in my history with the city, so I would like it to go to a study session, so I can have that. But also, I would like to hear from Wheat Ridge 2020, if they're under contract, what does that do? Have you, when you spoke with them, Mr. Mayor, what does that do, the contract with the name of that company that you said they were, you know, does that make that null and void?
You really did not give me any feedback either way, what it did to their contract.
Okay, maybe we should talk about it at a study session, then. I have no problem.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Please pull the council.
Is this to go to a study session?
No, it's the motion, Mr. Stites.
You make a substitute? Well... Yeah, I can, can I make a substitute motion to take it to a study session, please?
To the board.
Thank you. Next available.
Can we have a substitute motion to move this to a...
Is that your motion?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. The motion is to move it to a study session.
To move this to the next available study session. Got it.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Second, please pull the council on the substitute motion.
Motion ties four to four, with councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting yes, and councilmembers Stites, Sang, Wambel, and Goke voting no.
Well, it's already in the pipeline, so I have to vote no, so on the study session.
Excuse me, I'd like a clarification, what you mean by it's already in the pipeline. We've just seen this today with the motion. What does that mean?
It's in the pipeline because Mr. Paradi's talked to 2020 about this, and I've talked to 2020 about it, and they really, they didn't have any feedback one way or the other, so we just can't let this be in limbo. So I think at this point, it behooves the city to take it back and have it as public parking for all of the businesses along 38th, especially if we're trying to redevelop 38th.
I guess that you're going to ask me to make a decision on something, especially a real estate...
Point of order, decision's already been made.
Well, you could speak on the main motion, so the main motion is by Mr. Stites.
I guess I would like, you know, to have all this information. It seems there's like, there's a lot of backroom conversations going on, and you get bits and pieces. It would be nice to have all the information, and just sit down and discuss it at once.
Okay. We have the main motion, as stated by Mr. Stites, and we have some concerns by Councilmember Berry. Please pull the council on the main motion.
Motion ties four to four, with councilmembers Sang, Wambel, Goke, and Stites voting yes, and councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Langworthy voting no.
At this point, based on my conversations with 2020, and city staff, and property owners near, I have to vote yes on the main motion, as presented by Mr. Stites. And now we have to vote to go past 11. Is there a motion to go past 11?
I move to go past 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please pull the council on going past 11. I got a feeling we're adjourned.
You guys can just wait a second here. Okay, motion fails six to two, with councilmembers Adams and Stites voting yes.
We're adjourned.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.